I'd like to welcome everyone to the Newmarket Town Council Budget Workshop. We will start as always with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Anyway, town administrator.
So, you all have heard the presentation, and today you're going to be hearing from a number of departments, the larger ones, for the most part. One of the first things I want to do, though, is, as always, whenever we do have a budget, this after it goes to print, we find things after. So I'm going to ask Bill to tee it off with a finding after the budget was submitted to the council that we have to address.
Okay. So, I want to start off by saying that when we started the process of putting together budgets, because of changes that had occurred largely resulting from the move from the old accounting system to the new accounting system, and in that process, we also changed some of the, which is a good decision, was to change some of the accounts numbering system through the chart of accounts, so that they would be more in line with the way that the state does reporting, so your system would line up better with that. That meant that some of the older, the old sheets could not be used in preparation for the budget, so we were essentially rebuilding, in addition to the fact that you had some pretty sudden changes in personnel. So, essentially, that put us probably about a week off from what I would have thought would be a perfect, if you will, timeframe to get everything together. So, when the budget was prepared, it was the absolute best, to our knowledge, at that time, when it went to print, but I wanted to continue checking to make sure that we had everything as right as it could be. So I discovered a few things, and wanted to bring them up today, and Steve agreed that this would be the best time to do that. So the first thing is, if you take a look at the cover sheet that you have, it's the summary of all funds, and you go to page, oh, I'm sorry, 23. Now, starting here, because I think this, where I found the differences are in the budgets themselves, but they roll up into this, and so this is a kind of a quick and dirty way to do this, but I'll explain where this, where they go back to, okay? So, are we all page 23?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so on page 23, if you look down into the expenditures section, and you go to human resources. Okay, so, if we look to, say, line, all the way over to where the column is proposed town council for 2021.
Town admin.
Yeah, town admin, sorry. The, that's millions 602-891, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That number should go up by eighty-four thousand zero one five. Okay, now, it sounds like a humongous number, and it's a large number, however. What this is, is that in the process of looking at things, I realized that there was a line for the expenses related to employee, you know, tax benefits and so on, that were not, that wasn't getting picked up by the general fund line, okay? And so, that, what that simply does is, if you've looked at these budgets so far, you'll notice that that number strangely went down from the prior year, and that doesn't really make any sense. So this simply adjusts that back up to what it ought to be, okay? And we can, so anyway, and you can see that in the HR line.
When we hit the HR department, you'll tell us the changes in each of those lines.
Exactly, yes, I will. Okay, so that's that, and that adjustment, in terms of the percent change, would go up to eight point one five percent, okay, which is a 5.39 percent change.
In the department.
In that specific line item.
Not the overall budget.
That's it, not the overall budget. Okay, so then, if I could get your attention down to where the section for enterprise funds, and you look to water. I have to credit my colleague Sean Gregg for catching this right away, as he was looking carefully through his budgets and realized, hey, same exact thing, only, only a little bit different reason, but essentially that his, his number was, the FICA number seemed to be going down when his, his other line was going up for payroll. So that changes by one thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars to one oh two six eight seven five. And the other, the wastewater change, if you, to the next line, that also changes to buy, needs to increase by two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. The total change, if you go down to the net appropriation line, is eighty-eight thousand eighty-four dollars. Now, when we get to, when we get to, this is just a further explanation of those two lines, when we get to near the end, I believe, actually, wherever it is, whenever we get to that section, and you're talking to Sean, the, what I realize is that the, the line that's currently in full-time salaries is, was actually the total line, if you add together both full and part-time, and that actually drops from what you have, which is currently, we're proposing three hundred thirty-one thousand five fifty-one and twenty-one cents, okay? That is, as I said, is the combination of part-time and full-time, and it should be three thousand twenty-six dollars, eight hundred, well, three thousand twenty-six, three hundred twenty-six thousand eight oh one and ninety-one cents. Okay, so it reduces that, which then changes your percent to seven percent, as opposed to nine percent. So it improves that line from that perspective, which is, makes the numbers that I gave you earlier actually work out properly, okay? And that's pretty much all I wanted to bring up before we really jumped right into all the details.
The first department is recreation. That is on page fifty-five, the general fund, and then get ready for fifty-seven for revolving.
Good morning.
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 And if I could just, real quick, for, especially for new counselors, the process is that the department heads will talk about the priorities, maybe changes in the budget, and then you have the opportunity, and this is the time, to ask any questions that you have about the budget for that department head, so just.
And this is the other thing, too, usually, we do not take formal votes on changes, it's consensus, because we'd be sitting here all day making motions and segments, unless it gets too contentious, we don't do a formal vote.
So, as you know, the recreation department, I work with two budgets, the general fund and revolving. In the general fund, there's just very small changes. One, you might see under communication services, as you can see, what our actuals were, were way higher than what was appropriated, and that's due just how it was dividing the communication system, the telephone system, just went way up. It used to be paid under a different account, and then it got divvied up between the budgets, and we weren't aware of that, and it was, that's why it's a lot higher. It's just basically our phone bill once a month, that kind of almost doubled, so I did make that change in the next year's budget. And as you might look at some of the actuals, and see what was appropriated last year, and you're saying, wow, that's a little bit less than what you actually spent. Well, the year before, last year's budget, we took a lot out of the general fund and pushed it into revolving, just to kind, so we could keep our, our general fund flatlined as much as possible, because salary had gone up, and so, we're, we want to make sure we cover our employees, and where we can, on items, the following line items, we try to pull into revolving as much as we could. And so you don't really see too much of, any changes as what we appropriated last year as to what we appropriated this year, just a couple hundred dollars in each line, I think the phone one was the largest, and, yep, and the salary, and that's just because of change in personnel and different salaries.
So with, with the phone, I have, yeah, just a quick question, is that an accounting issue, or is that the phone, the cost?
No, it's accounting, we just, we slide bill in the departments where they're, versus we had one line in the past, telephone for everybody, so you can show their operations.
Right.
Just for procedural as well, if there's no changes, we'll check it off and then move on to the next department, so. Changes?
Changes.
Okay, revolving, page fifty-seven. And just for the counselors, new counselors, the revolving fund is a special fund that is funded through their own revenues. So when you see the three hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars proposed, that's funded through fees that they collect for all the programming. Doesn't have an impact on the tax rate.
And in looking at that, a lot of this is forecast numbers, especially when it comes to part-time payroll. We have to assume that every person is going to show up every single day, especially, a lot of it is summer camp. Our payroll for summer camp is up to, you know, anywhere between, you know, a hundred thousand dollars just to cover payroll for summer camp, but some of them go on vacation, some of them get sick, but I have to assume that they're going to show up every day when I forecast. So, if you were to look at last year's actuals on part-time, we're not nearly what I appropriate out there, and I'm also allowing for potential instructors to come in, and that's really why the revolving account was set up, is so we weren't turning anybody away that we could potentially make money on, because we didn't have it in the budget.
Can I, can I ask, will that also allow you to go the other direction? Should, you know, enrollees or people signing up for different programs fall off of there?
We cancel them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can go up and down, and it stays aligned, right?
Mm-hmm. Nearly all of our programs are revenue generating or break even. The only ones that sometimes aren't are special events, community events, where we try to subsidize those with sponsorships. There is, I'm not sure if it's in this one, hold on, let me just make sure. It's not.
What are you looking for?
I was just looking to see if I put it in the splash pad, I did not. We are going to be incurring some equipment purchases that aren't revenue generating, but that's generally how we work with revolving account, is we are allowed to purchase these things, because we have a surplus.
They have their own fund balance and fund, so if there's any, they're allowed to, the council allowed to withdraw your purchases from there.
Maybe this might be a silly question, I'm just going to ask.
Sure, no silly questions.
So the first line item about teen camp, so it was appropriated for twenty twenty of a thousand, year-to-date's ninety-seven fifty-seven, and so proposed is two hundred, is that just because of revenue?
No, it really is, when we're doing, our summer camp program is ages three, all the way up to going into ninth grade, and it's really hard to distinguish when we're purchasing something for the teen turf group versus regular summer camp. They're pretty much, it's umbrellaed, why it was separated initially, I have no idea.
Okay.
So I'm leaving two hundred in there for that one cool thing that teen turf might do, but generally speaking, we're purchasing everything volume and as a whole.
Got it, okay.
So this is just me trying to get there.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Is work study for, college work study, do you like?
Yes, once in a while, we are able to find either an intern student or a work-study student, owen, you and H, it doesn't happen all the time, I generally just leave the money in there, just in case we're able to find somebody. If we don't find somebody, it generally is just a zero, zero line. Many of these line items were set up a long time ago, we don't necessarily utilize them, it might be pushed into a different category, and sometimes that gets pushed into part-time.
Once we get the newest, the system switched over, you're going to see a lot of these lines go away, because we're not going to migrate useless lines to the new system.
Amy, can you talk about the splash pad?
Love to. My project. Two years ago, actually, three years ago, we submitted a grant from LWCF Land and Water Conservation Fund to purchase a splash pad, and that's a fifty-fifty match. We received approval to the grant last September, at the end of September, so, and now we're just in the process of trying to get the lease agreement with the town versus the school, because the land is Leo Landruff Field, it's owned by the school, but managed by the town, and we're right there in that process. Once that gets settled, we'll go to bid and start designing. Our goal is to have it up before summer camp. That is the goal. And so, probably starting in April, Greg Marles is very much involved in this process as well, but, so we are holding on to that. The grant is available to us to, for two years, so one year has gone by with the school construction, and nothing there but just having that parking lot closed off, and didn't want to put the splash pad in last year, because there wouldn't have been enough parking. We do assume, we are going to assume that there'll be people utilizing the park more often in the summer, and just having that excess parking, especially during summer camp, was necessary.
So with the five thousand dollars that's in the budget, is that for operating expenses of the splash pad, or what is that, what is that for?
Well, the splash pad is going to cost approximately four hundred thousand dollars. I think the match is one ninety-eight, so, and then the one ninety-eight is being, from our end, is being, a hundred of thousands of it is being funded by the revolving account, or the enterprise fund that Steve mentioned, approximately seventy-five thousand from capital reserve that we've been saving up for, and some impact fees, so that is how it's calculated, and I believe that's in the CIP plan for the splash pad, and then the other ninety-eight is coming from the LWCF match.
But the line item that's in the budget for five thousand dollars?
Oh, the operating, yeah, that's just generally operating costs, we, there's chemicals, it is a filtration system, and so we just want to make sure that we always have, and we also have it in the CIP plan, just to make sure equipment sometimes doesn't work, and we want to make sure that we always have something in there. How, how much it's going to cost is really going to determine on how our operating hours, are we going to be adding payroll to Saturday, Sunday, when we're typically not open on a Saturday and Sunday, and whether or not we will be charging for the splash pad. It is going to be fenced in, just because of the nature of it's a filtration system, and one other thing with the splash pad that you may not be aware of, it also includes permanent restrooms outside, which is something Leo Landruff does not have. So it is, it's actually a restroom and splash pad project, and it's a filtration, so there's no, you know, water to drink, water to waste, it's refiltering, resurfacing, recycling the water.
Any changes to revolving?
Do we have, did I miss it? The totals that are, that are in the account?
I don't have it somewhere.
Is there, so, in the revolving?
According to a report.
I do not have the revolving ones in there, I mean, for the surplus, you mean?
Yes, that's, sorry.
We do not have the revolving surplus in there, we don't, we don't put that in the operating budget.
Okay.
In your CIP, you have the amount of each of the capital reserve funds.
Okay, okay.
Do you know, off the top of your head, do you know what the ballpark was?
Four hundred fifty-seven thousand, approximately.
Thank you.
Yes, that's as of the last calculation, the rec. department made a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars towards that last year.
And, so do you have other plans for that surplus? So, yeah, I'm sure you do.
Sign out front of the police department, near the police department, resurfacing basketball court, yeah, a fence around the preschool playground.
So those are all included in the CIP, mostly?
Not necessarily.
No.
These are items that, once we come up with the plan, will come to the council, say, look, we have surplus in this budget, I'd like to withdraw to make a purchase.
There's, they're not, they're not in the line items, but I did mention them in my budget to Steve.
But those projects are in the CIP, or no?
They're just smaller than the CIP.
Okay, they're small, okay, okay.
Do you think you'll need more parking with this splash pad?
Not with the access to the, the high school.
Okay, yeah, right.
So that walk, that walk-through is perfect.
Sweet, yeah. Okay.
No changes.
Thank you, everyone. Come down to the Halloween haunt, well, downtown.
If we get out soon enough.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Have a good time today.
You're welcome, thank you.
Exit fire than DPW. Some fires on the range.
Everybody there? Fire. The big change in fire is salaries. We've been losing full-time people to the area departments pretty annually, almost, which is a big expense to the town. So I talked with Steve, and we adjusted the salaries and did a little survey of the area of where we were losing people to, and we were way, way behind the curve with that, so we made some adjustments on the full-time guys' positions to, basically, they, they won't leave now because of money. The benefits are pretty much all the same everywhere else, but, so hopefully that will take care of that. The part-time salaries, obviously, there's more calls, every year, there's an increase in calls, we're busier and busier. We have pretty many people that cover shifts overnight and weekends with our part-time people. We have two full-time staff during the day, Monday through Friday. The rest of the budget is the same budget as previous years, just cover an operational cost, but the big increase here is salaries.
You note, you will note that his budget and my budget do not match. I reduced his part-time salaries to two hundred thousand. Equipment purchase from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand, just to, trying to find places to reduce, you know, I know he needs the equipment, but overall, I need to look at the budget, the budget as a whole, so I level funded him.
Do you, what's, what's your opinion on the reason for the increase in calls? Is it growth in the area, just more?
There's more people, everybody, you know, the population's higher, and everybody's getting older, you know? That's really it, it's not really any facility-driven type of thing, but the bulk of what we do is medical. On the flip side of that, revenues continue to increase, too, so.
But that's a trend we could expect to increase over time, continue to increase, right?
Yeah.
That's where I'm.
Yeah.
I'll say for, for a community of our size, we're very lucky that we have a very active volunteer fire department. Most communities of our time would have gone to full-time fire by now, which would see a budget north, it would easily be the highest budget in the town, because you'd need twenty-four on, twenty-four, you know, twenty-four hour coverage, full-time firefighters. So, this is, kudos to the town of Newmarket for still volunteering and being able to provide the service.
Do you mind if I ask a question? Forgive my lack of knowledge about hiring practices, but you said that increasing full-time salaries try to help that retainment. When you hire someone, are they, like, contractually bound to work with the town for a certain period of time, after you've sent out to have them trained in everything, or is it just, they get trained, they get certified, they come work with you, and then Exeter gives them a better offer, for example?
For us to hire anyone, they already have to be trained. We're not like the police department, where you can send them off to get their training and stuff. They already, the state of New Hampshire requires you to have all the certs, so coming off the street, you're already fully trained, so there's.
And then at that point, it's just who, who pays the best?
Yeah, so what was happening is, these guys were all, basically, we were like almost five dollars behind anyone in the area, so they were starting out here, and then, and even the full-time big departments are having trouble right now, there's like a shortage of firefighters, so that's the other thing, that's, that's a big problem, I mean, Portsmouth, Dover, up there, they get postings all the time.
Yeah.
But that's what's unique here, is you, you have to be fully trained, and to find somebody like that. And to find somebody like that, it can be a challenge.
Especially, yeah. One of the things that, when you're competing, when you have a fire, the plus of our fire department is they work basi- I'm going to say a nine-to-five shift, but a seven-to-three shift. So, that's attractive to certain individuals. However, if you are used to do, actually being a firefighter, I mean, being a firefighter in the firefighter lifestyle of a twenty-four on, twenty-four on, twenty-four on, excuse me, forty-eight.
Five days off.
Five days off. You get overtime usually, because at some point in time, you're going to have to cover more. Plus, with those five days off, you can have a second job.
They go work somewhere else.
So, that's a very attractive thing, so it's, it's difficult. Usually, the firefighters we get are starting their career or ending their career. And they don't want to do the twenty fours.
All right, I'm still confused, and I apologize if you mentioned this at the beginning, but I'm still confused by the part-time salaries. Because year-to-date, it's two eighteen, proposed was two twenty-four, but your proposal's two hundred, so it's what's?
I just made a cut.
But it, with salaries, is somebody going away, or?
No, it's part-time. Part-time is a call, part-time is a call firefighters.
Okay.
So, it's all based on number of calls.
Calls.
Gotcha.
It's call-driven.
What we did, if you remember a year or two ago, we had an issue with getting response times on weekends. So, what we did is said, okay, guys, we'll pay X person a stipend to be on call those weekends.
Okay.
So, that's why it went up.
Yeah.
And it's actually been successful.
Okay.
So, we didn't have to bring in weekend staff.
Gotcha, all right.
So, that's why it's.
It's all per deal.
Okay.
And that area is, it could be, you know, we have a bunch of people just leave.
Yeah.
And we don't have enough, as many firefighters as we currently do. So, that, when it comes to the volunteers, that's very fluid.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
The full-time doesn't change that much.
Right, okay.
So, I don't have an issue with the adjustments to the salary. I think that historically, in all of our departments, whether it's the police, or fire, the school, the town of Newmarket, it seems to lag behind in, in salaries all around. But, that said, is there, was there a study done that we could see?
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful for the, for the council to have.
Yeah, can you send me another one?
I sent you that whole.
Send me another one.
I will, I'll send it to you again.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, I think it's a good backup for us to have. So, like I said, I don't have an issue with us being more competitive, because I think that that's really important for retention and, and recruitment.
Out of curiosity, Steve had mentioned that he had dropped down the equipment purchase. Looks like you were getting close to that twenty-five thousand mark. What, what were you planning on for the coming year? Did you have like any big picture items in mind? Or is it mostly just routine stuff that you have to get every year?
The biggest thing that's changed in the fire service is everybody's dying of cancer. So, now everyone's required to have two sets of gear. So, when we wash our gear, you can't put it in a dryer. It has to air dry, which takes a couple of days to do. It's an inner and outer shell. You need another set of gear. I mean, once you wash your gear, if everyone, we have, like the other night, we went to Stratum and Dover, everybody came back, washed their gear. If you don't have another set of gear to put on, you're fitted to your gear specific, you know?
Yeah.
So, we're required now, everyone has two sets of gear. So, just trying to buy more gear and stay up to snuff with that, the gear is expensive.
Of course. What's the average cost for, just the, the average firefighter, would you say?
It's twenty-seven hundred dollars for a set of bunker gear. That's just the gear, not the helmet and the gloves.
Yeah.
The hood.
Does everybody have two sets at this point?
No, no.
Okay. And I assume they, they have a lifespan too?
Yeah, it's ten years, and then you have to throw it away. So, it's just, that's really the, what we're just trying to keep up with. We, we, obviously, there's people, they have a second set of gear that's over ten years, but.
So, with that increase, you know, how, how many, how many years are you going to need to catch up so everybody has two sets? Will this accomplish it next year?
No, it'll, it'll take three years.
That's two sets, right?
It'll take about three years.
Kind of an odd question. You mentioned that, you know, you come in off the streets fully licensed, do they also bring gear with them, or is it something?
No.
Okay.
No, we have to provide all that stuff.
And remember, gear is fluctuating as well with the volunteers.
Yeah.
If we don't have the same number of volunteers, we don't have, need the same number of gear.
Did you get, did you have more questions?
No.
No, okay, that answered.
Any other questions on fire? So, fire's okay, and I do want to clarify something else, because this is the first one, there's a difference between the department head and the administrator. When we say we're moving on with the budget, it's my bu- it's the administrator's budget that we're moving on with. So, okay. Just a quick one, if you turn the next page, it's emergency management. I'm the emergency management director. I reduced it, I level funded it, two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. It's basically any training that we may need, as well as supplies if something were to happen. Okay. Public Works Administration, Public Works Director's here now. Page forty-one, we'll start.
There's no big changes in salaries. It's the same as previous years, there's a one percent increase. I added a three, Steve, Steve cut back the overtime. The overtime, what you see there for overtime though, that's for, the bulk of that is for snow removal purposes, and what few related storms we may get. And I just try to budget what we actually, like last year, we had a, we didn't have a real snowy winter, but we had a lot of ice events. So, you'd see, you'll see those increases. We, we typically don't budget what we should, worst-case scenario for the snow removal, so always trying to hold off on something else later on in the year. Which, where our budget cycle starts, I have the ability to do that. So, we don't do some projects till after winter, before July, but.
And what we try to do also is, if there's overtime, say if they have a snow event on a Sunday, if they get all their stuff done, I've asked Rick to send them home on Friday, so it doesn't impact, one, they need the rest. I mean, that's the other thing, they need some time off, to not impact the overtime as much, just try to send them home.
My crew's an older crew too, and they, they like to be sent home.
Any questions, Public Works Administration? Next one, roadways and sidewalks.
There's, uh.
I'm sorry?
Next page, yeah.
Next page, yeah.
So, on roadways and sidewalks, I was, I was looking at upping the sidewalk construction and roadwork. Steve turned that down, back down to the previous year. The curbside weed control, I kind of, I know that the committee's looking at this, so I had thrown a number in there to increase it, because I don't know where we're going with that yet.
You're right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And you'll see that Steve put it back to what we currently do, so.
Which is fine, our recommendation is going to be to keep it as was, as it was, yeah.
You must add the inside scoop on that.
No, I don't ask.
Surprisingly, I know.
But anyway, that's what that was all about.
Are we talking about the urban core thing? Or urban, what's it called, the weed control? No, what are we?
Oh, the urban pact? No, we're talking about weed, weed control.
Oh, weed control, yeah, got it.
The, and the other increase I had was my winter salt, just kind of trying to budget what I've actually been spending. We typically do not fund this to the level that it needs to be, and that's been going on for years. And that's one of those lines where I always have to go and find something or not do something in the spring. I like to try to budget it for what I actually likely will do. This, remember, this past winter was, it wasn't a very snowy winter, we had a lot of icing events, which, that kind of makes it like it was a snowy winter.
Yeah.
Because you have to put a lot of material out. We had a lot of ice. So, you see the number, I was under, almost a hundred and twelve, but.
Can we stock, stockpile either of those?
We do.
We do.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. And we get state pricing on that, our price is locked in, in August for the entire winter season.
That's good.
Any questions on roadways?
I have a quick question about the sidewalks. So, what would be next on the, on the docket for sidewalk construction?
I have a plan that's in draft form right now, that'll be coming forward.
Okay.
With a list of roads to connect the networks, whether it's voids or missing sidewalks. You'll see that in the next month or so.
Okay.
Should be a final draft, but.
Bennett's.
Bennett is where we kind of left off, and need to get to the top of it.
Finish that, yeah, that would be the first.
I think we should finish that, it's a high-traffic area.
It really is.
You know, we look at it as priority roads, as far as traffic volumes, pedestrian traffic, and so forth, so. There are other people in the community that feel their road is more important, but we can talk about that.
You gonna put a sidewalk on Ash Swamp anytime soon?
Pretty far around here.
You'd be surprised, actually, you, I think it'd be sooner than you think. There are a lot of sidewalks in those areas.
Huh.
If you notice, a lot of the other communities are now reaching out further.
Yeah.
Well, Dylan would be thrilled.
What used to be considered the woods in the rural area are now so developed, that it's more of a compact area.
And they're so dangerous.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, Grant Road, Ash Swamp Road, like, they're just so dangerous to walk on. I drive Grant Road all the time, and so when I, ever I see walkers, it makes me nervous, and as a.
Bikers as well, between the bikes and the, and the runners and the walkers, and yeah.
Especially if you're in like a blind spot of the road, curve or hill or something.
A lot of times you end up riding behind bikers, because you can't see enough to go by them.
It was really great what the state did on North Main, I mean, that's, that's a lot of sidebar. That was, that was a big expense out there that.
Yeah.
We have to maintain it now, but they installed it all, so.
And on Bennett, I mean, I think that that's, like you said, it's heavily, heavily trafficked for vehicles and pedestrians. And, and it's such a windy road that, yeah, yeah, it's, it'll be great to have that completed.
For mosquito control, is that something that's going to be probably continuing on in the future, just for warmer weather, wetter weather?
With the, the Tripoli and the West Nile virus? I mean, I would not even come closer recommending not doing mosquito control.
Yeah, I'm just saying moving forward, it looks like it wasn't on the budget last year, but makes sense, I guess, for, for spraying.
It's been in every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't, it never been cut.
Do we change where it was coming from? I think it moved, yeah, moved to buildings and grounds, right.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we moved it.
We moved it over to.
Okay, so, nothing on roadways, the next one is streetlights. Department had proposed forty, I proposed thirty. I did actual for electricity, he did make a point to me bright and early this morning, while I was getting ready to come here. Interest was dropped, it was, we did have an interest payment, but nobody budgeted it. That's for the loan for the lights.
The new LED.
The new LED. I mean, it's still a reduction of what we had in the past, but I don't know why it wasn't in there. I'm looking at the fire director. Good question.
Very good question. I'm trying to think if that came up in the other areas, but I'll have to go back and look.
Can you check?
I will.
See if we don't, yeah, so we're going to move on from this, yeah.
Can you just expand on interest for, or?
Yeah, when we did the, when we switched over from ha- old lights to LED,
Yeah.
we took a loan.
Okay.
And it's a loan through the savings of our electricity.
Yeah.
You just have to pay interest on the loan.
Of course.
So, so if you haven't, if you notice, the price of the actual electricity has dropped significantly, but we're covering interest in there. Uh, yeah.
So, does this mean it's likely to go back up on your, on your calling?
It needs to go back up then.
Yeah, it doesn't have to go, it, it, let me rephrase that, the department head and the town administrator will be the same. What you're going to see is, on the interest, I'll add the ten thousand.
So, it'll be zero.
Oh.
Right? No, isn't that what the department head has?
He, he did, but that was not correct, it should be ten thousand there.
Uh-huh.
And take the ten thousand from electricity and put it in interest.
Oh, so.
Because the actual, the actual expenditure for electricity last year was twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so it'll be twenty-seven and ten.
Exactly.
Two lines, okay.
Do you mind if I ask, with this year being a ten to twenty-seven, and just funding it with like ten thousand, would that be enough to cover the interest payment, or?
Oh, yeah, because if you look the year-to-date, it's ten thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
If you, if you look at the electricity, we only spent twenty-five, versus unproposed at twenty-seven, just to say, we'll find it.
Perfect, thank you.
The only, the issue we had last year, if you, if you noticed, somebody, we had a couple of people hit poles. So, we had to replace those. Do their insurance companies cover that? Yes, but we have, you can't, it can't be a wash, you have to show the expense, and we have to show it in the revenue, so.
So, the total will still be thirty?
Forty.
Forty? Sorry, I can't add, non-accountant. So, the percentage, I'm just, because we're going to use your budget, that's why I want to make sure.
No, it's, no, it.
Zero.
Right.
Because it'll net out, okay. Got it. I think I'm just going up, not down.
Yeah, I know, I know. Trust me, I know. Okay, the next, is any further issues with streetlights? The next is bridges, next page?
Bridges is, is the guardrail you see out there. No questions?
Something wrong with the math?
Yeah, it doesn't work.
On the sheet. I proposed six thousand, last year's was four thousand, the difference is four thousand?
Difference is two.
It should be two.
Oh, it should be two thousand.
And it is, I think at the bottom, it's just not.
The one up top is on the ground.
Carry down correctly to the bottom.
Check that.
Doesn't, doesn't impact the bottom line, it just.
Looks off on the bottom.
And that's replacing guardrails?
There's some areas in town where we're still putting some in, where there isn't any, and it should have guardrail. Like this year, we did, we did a little section on the bottom of Ham Street. We actually just did that the other day, but.
Did you do something on Lang's Lane?
We did Lang's Lane last year.
Last year, okay.
Typically, if a car hits it, the insurance pays to fix it, so, but every now and then, they're uninsured, so.
Okay, from there? All set. Do we go to youth vehicle?
Vehicle cemeteries?
Cemetery's a vehicle, so skip buildings and grounds and go to cemeteries. It's a one percent increase?
There's no real change here. The cemetery's, the Riverside Cemetery off Elm Street, the one behind the police station on Terrace Drive, and the little one up here on one fifty-two, Cheswell. Those three cemeteries, the town takes care of them.
Cemetery, no issues. Vehicle maintenance.
Vehicle maintenance.
Last year was appropriate sixty-three, four, five, one, we expended at the end of nineteen, seventy-one thousand, six, three, four. We're recommending seventy-five thousand.
That equipment maintenance line and increase, that's, that's, the bulk of that is snow removal. That's cutting edges and carbides and plowing, plow, wear and tear, stuff that has to be replaced after so many storms. All these tariffs that are going on, anything to do with steel, unfortunately, is driving the cost up.
So, that's a pretty big jump?
Yeah, it's, it's really.
Just for that reason?
It's, that's the bulk of it, yeah. The, it's, it's crazy, but it's, some of the increases are astronomical on that stuff, because it's all coming out of China.
How long does a cutting blade last?
It depends, Steve, it depends, you can get.
How many storms?
Three storms, maybe two. It depends what type of storm, you know, the length of the storm.
So, every time, every three storms, every plow has to get, there's a blade on the bottom of those plows, have to get replaced.
And it's got carbide with a piece of steel in front of it, so there's two pieces there. Every one of those plows, once you flip it, it's five grand. It's not cheap. So, we, we get every little piece of life out of them we can. I'm the one that always checks them and says, nope, you can get another storm. But it's, if you don't have it there. But it's, if you don't have it there, you'd wear the bottom of that plow out in eight hours, a plow. You'd be in change in your blade during a storm. All that friction out there on the road.
Right.
But all the stuff going on with the political stuff that's driving the cost, steel is. They won't even give you a price for like a thirty days now. It's like, this is it for the week.
Right.
Next week, it's a different price.
Okay, two questions, just on the seven thousand here. Public works, what's the difference between public works, vehicle maintenance and equipment maintenance?
So, vehicle is all vehicles. Equipment is, like I said, the loader, the backhoe, the street sweeper, the plows, all those parts, the wings, snow blowers, all that stuff. That's the difference. When we say a vehicle, that's like service and my pickup.
Yep.
But equipment is all the, the sander parts, all those.
The large.
All that equipment accessory stuff. And the bulk of that stuff is snow fighting equipment. When you see equipment maintenance, that's snow. That's the cutting edges, carbides.
So vehicle maintenance is like the brakes and the.
The brakes.
Normal, yeah.
Yeah, oil changes.
Yeah.
So vehicles? I think that's it.
Yeah, solid waste, Steve, page fifty-eight.
Oh, solid waste.
It should be fifty-eight in your book list.
Fifty-eight.
So when you look at solid waste, um, it increases slightly every year. We're just covering our operation costs. We have curbside recycling, curbside MSW pickup. We have the transfer station, which is open one full day and a park day during the week. Household hazardous waste, we do it every other year, so it's in here again. You'll see that it wasn't, it's in here again. It's something we probably should start considering to do every year and not every other year. The state's kinda looking at us like, why are you doing it every other year? And there has been a slight increase. There's more people, so there's more people taking part in the program. But, uh, it's something we should probably consider doing every year. There's really no other increases, other than that's our operational costs for the, uh, everyday operations. It's all contracted out through Casella. Do we have a new contract, Steve?
Not yet, we're gonna.
We're working on it.
And it's up in the air because, um, one community may change their collection system, which would save them money, but drastically increase ours. So I basically said we're not gonna go in that one. So we have to, we're trying to figure out who's gonna negotiate what.
We're in a contract with Stratum in New Fields and New Market.
And Stratum wants to do, um, curbside.
The big bins.
The pickup, that the automatic.
Oh, yeah.
We are too, and I know people find this funny, we're too urban to have those, because the trucks can't get in on the side streets. We have a, we actually have a downtown, not like the town center in Stratum.
Stratum's a subdivision, it's big open subdivision.
Yeah, so it's physically not possible. It's, it's, we would actually have to have two systems. One would be for this area, and then in the further out areas, yeah, it's possible.
Okay.
But it's.
It would be very expensive.
Right.
When's that contract up?
December.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah. It's, it's typical that we negotiate longer, once we get, you know, do an extension, so.
But overall, do you see the, the cost going up significantly in the, 'cause, I mean, that's everything I hear, the recycling market?
Recycling is not. It is the, it's, what you hear is true. It's cheaper for us to bury it than it is to recycle it.
Right.
People, people freak out at me all the time, but I say it's fiscally irresponsible.
It's, it's fiscally, but it's not environmentally irresponsible.
They don't like to hear, but it's, it's. Like, it's, it's super expensive, and the fact of the matter is, and they, nobody will admit it, they have no place to put that stuff, so we pay all that extra money, and you know where it gets dumped?
Right.
Right in the landfill, 'cause they have no place to put it. There's no market.
It's not, I, I, okay, so I took a tour of waste management last year. It's not, they're not burying it. There are huge buildings filled with recycling materials that, after a while, certain ones like paper would be buried because it turns into mush. It's just natural degradation. Um, metals and those items are just sitting in massive warehouses.
Are they just waiting for the price to?
They're waiting for the market.
Price to change.
Uh, it's China. China's the market. They're, they're hoping that India may open or someplace like that, but India's got their own issues, so.
Even burying, it's gonna continue to go up too, right?
Yes, because we're not licensing any more facilities.
Right.
Um.
And they're filling up.
Right, the big ones, we're lucky that we go to, um, Waste Management in Rochester. They have enough room to expand. If we had to go to Casella in Bethlehem, they're running out of room. The town of Bethlehem would not let them expand. So, what's that mean for us? We probably will see an increase, because everybody who does go to Bethlehem are gonna start coming to Rochester. They can't get another facility, site approved.
So do we expect, like, what kind of a percentage increase do you think? You have no idea?
No idea.
It's, it's like rolling the dice, really.
Yeah. It's what the, it's what the market is. I mean, if we hit a recession, we probably would see this drop, because China would be making more products over there. It would go up a little bit.
Right.
But with our economy doing well, there's drops.
Like the other day, I, I just got this notice the other day, just real quick story. Mattresses, when they got on the roll-off now, they, someone's counting them. They're gonna charge me thirty-five dollars for every mattress that falls out of the can. I said, I don't think so. You know, we're always paid by the ton. There's no, no weight there, but they take up space in the landfill, so now they're gonna just whack everybody. So we're trying to find another way. You go into the transfer station now, you see all the mattresses piling up, because that's crazy. And who's, who's just sitting in, in, up there watching and counting the can as it empties? There, you don't, you know, I, but that's the type of stuff that's going on.
So you're gonna have to up the land, the, uh.
Probably.
Well, we may, we may have to, we may have to, but I'm trying to find an alternative, 'cause I'm not gonna pay thirty-five dollars for one mattress.
What else could you do? Just shred them or something?
Yeah, there may be some other, I, I got the, I'm working with the NRA right now to help.
N R R A.
N R R A. They'll shop around and find you the best price and the best way to, and we're a member there. We pay to be a member, so we work with them on a lot of stuff, free on remote, everything.
And I do want to remind the council that this budget is in special revenue. A percentage of it, not all of it, is offset by the pay, as you throw system.
Right.
We, I, I, when I first got here, people were saying, they're trying to get us to have it a hundred percent covered by the pay you throw. I'm like, that's not possible. You'd be paying five dollars a garbage bag, so.
And people would probably be just throwing their trash in the river.
Yeah.
Which they do anyway.
Yeah. You anticipate probably having to raise the cost of the bags?
It's, well, I'm trying not to.
We haven't changed the bag price in a long time.
We're competitive, so.
We've been pretty fortunate.
Yeah.
Question. As someone who has a dumpster at his, uh, complex, what is the price of bags right now?
Two twenty-five for the large.
Thank you.
One fifteen, I believe, for the small.
Appreciate it.
That's where some of us have seen the composting help, 'cause I've gone from two bags to one, which is like half of it.
Yeah.
And that is being, you know, composted, so it's not going in a landfill. So if we could get more people to participate in the composting, that, I think that would help.
Yeah.
Can you speak at all to how that's been going?
It's going well. I think it's about thirty to thirty-five residents taking part in it up there. Um, I don't know how many people are still doing it on their own.
Quite a few of us.
Seems like this, yeah, I, I see the truck actually quite a bit stopping at houses, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
While I'm here, I just wanna say, good work in the color. It looks great.
I know.
Yeah.
That was a stressful project.
It does look fantastic, and we had, we did get a.
We paved yesterday. I don't know if you were. We paved yesterday. Just gotta touch up the shoulders and now try to get the grass to grow before it gets too cold.
I received an email yesterday or the day before, um, from a resident who said that they complained in the beginning and had a lot of criticism about the project.
Rick and I both got that.
Which I didn't get the original email. I'm glad that I didn't. But I did get the apology email that said, you know, thank you, and you, you and your crew did an amazing job, so.
It was a big project. It was, it was fun. Glad it's over.
So we're also have solid waste?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is police. And that is on page forty.
Okay. Oh, we're right on time, too. Look at that.
Don't jinx it.
I thought we were ahead of schedule, actually. That's why I was looking. I missed the page number.
Forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
You guys were pranking me this morning. I feel low.
Good morning.
Good morning. How would you like to do this? Would you like to go line by line? Would you like to talk about the, the memo that I sent regarding the new officer first? What, how would you like to handle this?
Maybe an overview?
Sure.
And the memo, probably, and then we can go line by line.
Okay, sure.
If there's any questions.
So as you will see, there is an, uh, a seven percent increase, uh, request. The majority of that seven percent increase is contractual, um, coupled with the request for an additional police officer position to work in the patrol division. Uh, there's also, uh, an increased request for part-time salaries. I can get into that more if you'd like. There's an increase in equipment, field supplies, uniforms, training, uh, medical, um, criminal investigations. Um, and I have reasons for, for all the requests. The big one, uh, would be the, uh, new position for the, uh, police officer. Uh, currently, we have fourteen full-time police officers. The last time we increased our staff was last year. That was, that was a position that was placed in the elementary school that is being paid for by the school district. We do have the ability to utilize that officer in the summertime, but while the school's in session, he's there forty hours a week. The idea and the thought and the hope is to put this officer on the street to fill in the gaps where we have single coverage right now. I owe it to the police officers to, to fight for this, um, and I think it's, the, the time has come. Uh, I'm in my fourth year as police chief, and I think the first time I spoke to the council, I told them that this was coming eventually, and, and here I sit today. Did everybody receive the memo regarding the position? I'd be happy to answer any questions on that or questions about, uh, the budget itself.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
About that, that, the hours, I mean, you, you put it out there very specifically what was needed. And the, the hours that are, or the calls, I guess, that the officers cover was remarkable. And, um, so, I mean, obviously, they're working hard and doing a really phenomenal job in our community, so I just wanted to comment on that. I was blown away by that, as compared to other communities, and, um, it was significant, I mean.
We're very fortunate. We have a hard-working team here and, and like to keep it that way. We have a good crew.
I have the same question I had for, uh, for Rick. What, in your opinion, is causing the increase in the calls that were mentioned in your memo?
I think law enforcement has evolved. We're, we're no longer just arresting bad guys. We are caretakers, we are peacemakers, we are people, uh, we, welfare checks on people. We act as an arm for Seacoast Mental Health. They close at four P M. every day, and if you look at our log, it seems like every day we're doing a welfare check on somebody, uh, which either leads to a medical call or, um, some type of assistance, transportation to, uh, a, a local hospital. That is probably one of our biggest increases, is being a community caretaker, which leads to more fire calls and ambulance calls.
Should, are, are there alternatives to providing that kind of service versus a, a police officer?
I really wish they were. I really would, and I can give you an example. I'll, I'll give you an example. Can I use you for a second, Counselor Finch? Counselor Finch's, um, parents call, and they say, he sent me some texts today, some text messages today that are very concerning, and I'm worried about his, his mental well-being. We're not going to send anybody but a police officer there, because those can potentially be violent. Sometimes during the daytime, we'll accompany a, a, a representative from Seacoast Mental Health, but the majority of time, it's just an officer doing a welfare check to make sure that, you know, Casey Finch is okay and that he's not going to hurt himself, and then he has the resources available to him, whether it be a ride to an emergency room to be evaluated or to make sure he hasn't hurt himself. But I really wish there was a different, uh, alternative. I know the state of California, um, has response teams. We are far from that. It's gonna be police handling that.
Are there any, um, other departments around here that employ like a social worker or something like that, who could do some of the paperwork that maybe is?
I don't know. I, I don't know, uh.
Not that that's ever been considered or.
I'm not even sure Dover has a social worker on staff.
No, they don't.
I don't believe they do. Maybe, uh, a Nashville or a Manchester, a, a bigger, you know, three hundred, eight, three hundred person, uh, three hundred officer agency maybe, but around here, I'm, I'm not familiar with any.
Can you speak at all, um, to the opioid situation here in town and the work that you've done?
I'd love to brag about it for a second.
Yes, please.
Thank you for asking that. It was that softball you just tossed me.
I try.
Uh, and you were part of the original New Market ASAP group, uh, which we began in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, I believe. We just got rocked with opiates in, um, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and we began keeping statistics. And our numbers, I believe, were around forty-five overdoses with eight deaths in that time. And when we began the ASAP group, we set a goal, and it was a, a realistic goal that we were gonna try to reduce in half every year, and we've done that. Uh, this, uh, I, I can't give you the exact stats. I know I give them to you in my monthly report, but off the top of my head, um, I can't give those to you right now. I can tell you right now, we've had two overdoses this year, um, and one was, I believe one was fatal. So we've come a long way. Uh, we've changed how we, uh, respond to this crisis, as opposed to simply just putting someone in handcuffs and taking them to jail. We now work with people and try to provide them, uh, assistance, uh, with the local hospitals. Everything from getting them there to introducing them to a recovery coach, to working with them to try to get health insurance to pay for it. So we, we've just changed our, our outlook on it, and, uh, it's worked.
Do you see more of that work happening? 'Cause I, I mean, we're just looking at the numbers, you know, like, so, and you're, and obviously the numbers are being reduced, but that doesn't mean that your workload is being reduced. You know what I mean? Like, I think it's probably shifted to more of that.
Our workload has been reduced, because we're not, the, the recidivism of the people who are overdosing isn't there, which is great. It means they're getting some help. We're also seeing that other agencies are, have followed suit. Uh, when we first began this, and I gotta give Chief Seer a lot of credit, because he's the one who, uh, said, we need to address this, and gave us the, you know, the, the power to run with it. So I give Chief Seer a lot of credit for, for starting it. But when we did start this, this new way of thinking, a lot of agencies looked at us and laughed at us and said, this isn't gonna work. You know, it's, it's still a crime to, to use heroin. It's still a crime to use opiates, and we took a chance and, and proved them wrong, and now other agencies are, are doing the same thing we're doing, so. Proud of that. I just had a quick question. Um, following what, uh, we had heard from the, uh, fire chief, do you find that there is, um, a pull from other communities for our officers, or do you think in general we are providing enough to help keep the retention high for New Market? That's a great question that could be answered differently at any different time, but right now, I think we're, we're in, in good shape. The council and, and the, and the town administrator and the police union came together with a great contract three years ago. We're in the third year of that contract. Obviously, we had retirements last year, and we had a, a staff member move to New Zealand to, to, she got married and she has a different life now, but we had, we've had, have had a couple of retirements. But for the most part, I, I think that that contract, it was attractive enough to sustain our, our, our officers here.
Since I've been here, we've had very few, if any officers leave New Market to go to, say, Portsmouth or Dover. Usually, they go somewhere because they're moving to another community far away, not someplace they can no longer work here, which is kudos to the chief and the Chief Seer and the department, because that's a rarity. That's a real rarity.
I'm glad to hear that. I had a question about adding an additional officer. When we talked about that, my recollection, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was the onboarding costs for a new officer were fairly significant?
To come onboard?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I was just trying to figure out where, the numbers that we're looking at in the budget, are those for the salary, just the baseline salary increase? Where would those costs pop out in the budget?
The other costs?
Yeah, for that onboarding specifically.
So training, you'll see some in training, you'll see some in, in, in uniforms. You will see some in uniforms, equipment, field supplies, the contractual obligation, medical.
Cause I, again, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was in the ballpark of like eighty K.
It is. So that number factors in the cost of sending the officer to the police academy, the cost of training that officer. And I'm gonna use Counselor Finch again. If Counselor Finch is the new officer, I'm factoring in his salary and my salary as the field training officer to come up with that figure of eighty thousand before he actually handles a, a call for service by himself.
It's not eighty thousand in one-on-one expense. It's eighty thousand dollars. You, you'll see it. It, it's absorbed in the budget.
Okay.
It's not a one-time eighty thousand dollar fee. It's eighty thousand dollars from over, from other hours being used that can be used somewhere else.
Okay. All right. That's why I'm not seeing.
Yeah. You know, see, it's not, there's no correlation between eighty and eighty thousand dollar increase.
Okay.
How long does it take for the officer to get, go from training to being fully onboarded?
The hiring process is, is approximately two months. Because we have to, we have to advertise it, we have to hold a written test, a physical agility test, a background check, a psychological evaluation, a medical test, a polygraph examination, and then they have to go to the police academy, which is sixteen weeks. If we have the ability to, to work with them prior to the academy, we'll try to put them in some type of field training. If the academy's next week, then we'll do the field training after the academy, and that's usually another eight to twelve weeks. So you don't normally see an officer that we hire by himself or herself until nine months out. So it, it does take a while to, to, to get somebody up and running.
I just wanted to bring that out because it's not, it's not, it's a significant amount, but it's not real obvious from the numbers, so.
The increase that you see is just the salary right now?
Yeah. And going back to the, the source of needing to, to add another officer, is that a trend you see continuing to, the type of work that you need them for, is that gonna continue to increase over time as far as you, in your?
I think eventually it will. This will sustain us for quite a few years, I think. The trend is to try to reduce the, the single coverage is, is what's concerning to me.
Can you say again, when was the last time, aside from the school resource officer, when was the last time we increased the?
So I, the research that I have found, Rodney Collins was the last person to increase a body here. And I, if I remember correctly, or if I've been told correctly, it was nineteen ninety-five, that the last time we asked for another position. And Chief Cahan, and I know I'm dating myself, Chief Cahan spoke eloquently at the deliberative session in, in favor of that position.
That's a long time.
And, you know, the M R I report, you know, said it best, New Market runs very lean, and we should be proud of that, that we've been able to sustain as long as we have.
To be honest, I was thinking about that coming in this morning, about the M R I report. We're starting to see the fallback, fallout of running lean. We've run lean for the last, at least easily since I've been here, but costs go up. And overall, in our budget, that's why you're seeing these increases that look significant, but if we were to be operating as normal, we probably wouldn't have been as lean. We, we balanced a lot of the budget on surplus.
Right.
And we don't have the surpluses we used to, so now you're seeing the increases.
And we've talked about this day coming.
Yes, I always, I always kept saying that. It's gonna come at some point. It's gonna come at some point, so it's, here we are.
Any other questions I can answer for anybody?
I, I don't have another question, but I'm fully in support of adding another officer, so just on the record.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you for everything you and your department do.
Much appreciated to hear that. Thank you.
So we're also have a police.
Thank you. Thanks. Can I give a quick plug for the drug takeback day, which is happening right now, ten A M. to two P M.
I should have brought mine.
Please bring your unused prescription medications. And this year, we are accepting e-cigarettes and vaping material. The only thing we ask is that you take a battery, if you have a battery in your e-cigarette, to take it out prior to giving it to the officer. So, but feel free, we are, we're open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, but from ten to two, we're accepting drugs today. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
Five-minute break? Am I trying?
Trying to find the pages on?
Sorry.
So in minus page twenty-eight?
Okay, maybe I read it wrong.
No, twenty-nine.
Okay.
Is it not? Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry. It is twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah, very good.
It's right there. There's not much we can do. We have to hold the election.
Right.
This, we always see this every four years.
Could you maybe just elaborate for me the, the cost that go into the election? Is it just like the ballots and?
Ballots, programming, the boxes, election workers.
Okay.
Postage.
Fair enough.
Postage.
Postage is a big one.
Basically, everything we see at the election.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absentee ballots is a large cost.
Actually, I think a kind of fair question. How many absentee ballots does New Market typically?
For a presidential election, we just looked, we, we saw right around, it was between four fifty and five hundred.
Okay.
So we're trying to guesstimate what's gonna come forward for the presidential primary, which will be sometime, January, February. But we took it off that right around four fifty to five hundred.
Fair enough. Is there a minimum amount that you have to have on hand, or do you just go with?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. The state sort of determines what you did four years ago, and they have their algorithms they use, and they just send us a whole stack, and usually, they're played on it.
Awesome. Thank you.
And this year, this, that fiscal year, we also have to do what's called the ten-year purge of the checklist. So the supervisors of the checklist, they have to run a report of pretty much anyone who hasn't voted in the last two presidential elections, and they mail out what's called a thirty-day notice. So that goes out, with us having our large rental population that we have, we send out a lot of notices. So also part of my postage line and my election official line, it's, you know, it's incorporating the hours for the supervisors to run those lists and do the mailings. My office tries to absorb a lot of the work that needs to be done, but they still have a lot that they need to do as well. So that's also throughout the year. I begin, that begins January of twenty-one. How do you, what are, how are our equipment, the, the ballot box and the ballot machines, like where are we at with that stuff? Yep. So the one thing that has been in my budget the last few years are the ballot, are the, the booths. So you guys have seen all the new booths that have gone in. So last year, I purchased the last of, of what we needed. We have to have for a presidential, one per every hundred voters, which is right now about seventy-eight, and we just purchased ninety. So we're fully covered for quite a while. So that's, that whole project is over as of right now. The ballot box and machine sees maintenance every year. Last year, they took it, did a big overhaul. It still works very well. But they are, the state is looking at changing the boxes you, or the machines used. So that could be a cost coming, but they brought a lot of people to Concord. I know Moderator Hawkins went up there, and that was probably six or eight months ago, and we haven't heard anything since, so. So if the state mandates that we have to change our ballot box, we incur that cost as a municipality? Yep.
But it wouldn't be this year.
No. No.
Cause technically, the only ballot box you need is a box. Not every, we're, not every, but I think it's still, majority municipalities do not.
Right. Have their machine.
Right, their hand count.
Mm-hmm. No, thank you.
No, we're too big.
No, those machines are not connected anywhere outside of the room they're in. Nope. They're, they, I mean, they run out of power, but they also have battery.
There's no way to add to it.
Right. Everything is done through a memory card. Which I mail back and they get wiped out after a reelection. Once they're complete. You and your staff do an amazing job. It is, it is my favorite day of the year, like, and this, and we get four this year, so. I do. I think it's something like really special that we, we all vote in one spot, too. And so you see like the same, you know, I see faces that I only see on election days. Yes. And, and I just think it's a, it's a really, I, I know it's a lot of work, but you make it look seamless. You make it look easy. Good. That's good to hear. You know, you hear so much negative press about elections, and it just doesn't happen here. And I, and I'm sure that that's true of a lot of towns in New Hampshire. Like, we just, it's a, it's a well-oiled machine, and you do a fantastic job. Thank you.
So I had a question about postage.
Sure.
Are you, are you allowed to do electronic and eliminate postage?
No.
Actual mailings? I didn't think so. I was checking.
No.
All right.
There's only one type of ballot, and that's, they're called U O C A V S, which are uniformed overseas citizens, and they're pretty much military, and they can get theirs by email, but even they have to return by first-class mail.
I'm sorry, I was actually thinking of tax, tax collection.
Oh, tax collection, no. They have to be paper bills still.
Okay.
Yep. New Hampshire's still a paper state.
All right.
But you can sign up to get them electronically.
I mean, I like paper for ballots, but.
Yeah. We still have to mail them.
Yeah. Okay.
Also, Town Board. So I'm gonna make a recommendation to try to get some time at the end, that we hit some of the smaller departments, because the next department hits, he's here, but it's at eleven. I mean, I think we could knock out a bunch by eleven forty-five, I mean, ten forty-five. So if you guys wanna start on page twenty-five, which is the town council.
Thanks, Terry.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-five, the town council.
Cut it.
It's a, it's a page off, page twenty-four.
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 Yeah, that's fine. Four percent increase. Just actual costs. Training, council's been doing more training, which is good. So it's only eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any issues with town council?
Nope.
You're up.
Yeah, no. Let's, so under training?
Yep.
Do you see that six thousand?
I know, yeah, it looks like the, the numbers. That was, not training, that was a consultant. But we need to find somewhere that you get, I believe it was part of an M R I.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm trying to think if it was that year or, I'll have to double-check with the, I'll, I'll have to double-check.
Or the finance direct, that, that?
No.
No?
No. I don't remember what it was.
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
What about the goal-setting firm? Oh, really?
Paid for by the state?
Insurance.
Insurance, okay.
Oh, right.
They figure if you solve the problem beforehand, then I have to pay insurance later. So I'll set with council?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one, T A. One percent increase. Mainly. Sorry, my spreadsheets. Backing up. Printing and publishing, staff development, it just, I go with, it, it depends on, that's my I C M A. It really depends on where it is. This year was Nashville, next year, still trying to figure it out. Well, I know where it is, but travel may be different. It's in Toronto. So, yes, I have to travel internationally. It's closer than most other places that we go, but it is the International City Management Association. Books, we do still buy the supplements to the law books, cause even though you have the laws online, you also get case laws in the books that we receive.
And the printing and publishing?
Cost of town reports and general printing.
Is that what's the nature of that?
Yeah. And we're trying to cut back on town reports as much as we can.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's just the cost there.
Meaning do them electronically or cut, cut down on them altogether?
We have to legally print them.
Okay.
So.
All right. So a limit. You're trying to?
Yep.
Trying to.
So.
Okay.
Um, can I follow up on the town reports? How many do we print out and how many typically get taken?
Um, we, when I got here, I believe we're around two thousand. I think we're down under a thousand now, roughly around there. We may have a case or two left, not a lot.
Fair enough. So what we print is actively being taken and gone.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Now it's down.
They're very good for killing flies.
Yeah.
Well, it's one way.
So any issues with the T A? Well, not the T A, but the department.
We're going to non-publicity.
Okay, that department's fine. Finance. I'm gonna ask the interim finance director, that's the next page.
Wait a minute. I'm not till one.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, sure. Is there any questions?
What is your thirty-six thousand dollar increase?
Uh, let's see.
I mean, the big thing is, we are now absorbing the cost of a finance director that we shared with, previously with the school.
Great. And we also did one small increase for the treasurer in recognition of her hard work. She's been doing this for quite a long time, and she's quite good at it. Um, she's been doing this for quite a long time, and she's quite good at it, and really dedicated. And then, um, we also put a increased part-time salary, um, amount, so that we have somebody to actually pick up some of the load. Um, two people in that office is really not cutting it.
When I got here, the office had four people plus the finance director. We're down to two. And apart, um, essentially the last two years of part-time finance director. Things, it's not, the staff is working very hard, it just was, um. We needed some additional assistance. I know one of the things we kept talking about is HR, focus on HR. What you'll see is that we're recommending, we're taking one of the full-time positions out of finance, and actually adding it to HR. To represent someone who will be overseeing payroll and their duties, focus more on that. And this par- part-time is doing more just processing of the accounts.
It's actually picking up quite a, quite a bit of the load. And it, the other thing is that it's, well, I'll wait until we get to HR, talk about that, about the HR position.
This line item is increasing.
Which one?
The.
Part-time.
Finance, part-time salaries.
Yes.
So overall, even though we're taking a position out?
You'll see the position in HR. So what you're, you're seeing not as much of an increase in the finance, full-time, because the, because the individuals rule has moved out of this position to a different department. What you're seeing, we, we offset the increase in the director salary, so you're not seeing, you'd probably see an additional fif- I'll say roughly fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a. Change, because you're no longer, your MOU is no longer, um, picking up the cost to the school district that you were prior. Um, and so that, part of that cost is being distributed to IT, which we'll get discussed later. And then finance, there's, because I'm dividing my time between those two positions.
That's right.
Yep, um. So the new, new financial system, I know that that was. I did that for a living before I retired, installing those things, so I know that it can put a lot of stress on people to convert from the old to the new system.
It is.
And there's almost always a delay, and it takes longer than you thought, and more work than you thought.
Yeah.
So I wanted to talk about what factor that was, because that's gonna be a finite amount of time.
Yes.
And it eats, well, is that, is that part, does that play any role in why we can't share the service anymore?
No.
Okay.
No. No.
So that, that amount, I mean, it's significant when we acknowledge that, that.
It wa- it was taken due in our time. Um, the difference is, the position of finance director and on the town is the CFO. So they, they're the CFO of this town, of the municipal government. The role of the business administrator on the school side is of the COO. They see not only of the finances, but they see some of the operations, like the lunch program, the buses, the plowing, those kind of items that we have other departments to take over. It was the wish of superintendent to focus on education. And need, she needed a business administrator to focus on the operation.
Okay. Alright.
So.
We, we've alluded to some of the reasons, but I don't know that we've been that, or maybe I didn't absorb it previously, if it was mentioned before. So, um, just wanted to make sure that wasn't a factor as well.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, to be honest, they, we knew going into the agreement that, yeah, we would take it one more time because of fi- because of this program. And on the flip side, the school would be taking a lot more time than, uh, facilities director, because of their projects.
Yeah, but the timing was such that we were doing a new system on top of that.
No, we knew, no, we knew.
Okay.
That was part of the deal, when we got in there, we said, no, this is already coming, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Any questions with finance? Okay. Next one, the next page, HR.
Okay. Alright, so, um.
Where do we, first, let's do the change.
Right.
So what's the new numbers?
The, the new numbers that I alluded to earlier are, if you look to the FICA line. FICA goes up by.
What's the actual number, so I can put it in?
Oh, hold on one second.
Cause they, they want a bottom line.
Yep, yep, I can do that. One second. So the new FICA number is one four seven, seven seven eight, point six four.
We don't do cents.
Okay. Seven seven nine.
DRA gets a, gets a, that's why we do cents.
I, I actually know this, but, uh, okay.
What's the other one we changed?
Um, then you're looking at, there's.
Medicare?
There's a few.
Yep.
Um, the, the next one is, um, five four, yeah, it's the very next line down, Medicare, it's, uh, five four, four two one. Next one is retirement. That's five three three, oh no, hold on a second.
Wait a minute, yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Why is your time being?
I wanna make sure I'm getting, get my lines lined up here correctly. Yeah, it is, yeah. That's part of it. It's, uh, five three three, oh five three.
Saying it, five three three.
Oh, five three.
Oh, five three.
Yeah, because we're rounding up. And then the last one is. Workers' compensation. And that's one four four. Zero zero zero. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. And, and that is, that's the result of exactly what I said earlier.
One million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Say that again?
One million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. There was the eighty, six, that was a product. Other than that.
I had, I had six eighty-six, nine oh six.
That's not what's, I just added the number you gave me.
You just did? Hmm, okay.
So let, let's go over this again, cause I don't want any more errors.
Oh, no, you're right, you're good.
Okay. So, what you see in here though, is health insurance. We were predicting that, we actually can reduce health, did we have the new figure on health insurance?
Uh, I thought the health insurance number was ac- actually in there, the six forty-three.
You increased it by eight percent, we got the GMR.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that. Hold on one second.
You may be able to reduce health insurance.
Hold on one second.
Oh, I need the number, I don't think we're holding up other departments. While he's looking that up, you see the salary on the bottom, that is moving that one person from finance to HR.
Okay.
Other than that, it's mainly all costs associated with, um, insurances and. Operations.
Somebody got the delta and the percent change?
Yeah, it's, uh, eight percent change. Which if you add in the sixty-two four hundred, it's not.
Yeah.
As bad.
Yeah.
Bill, if you remember, the budget came in. The GMR came in after you proposed your healthcare line.
Yeah, I did though, uh, make the change.
Right.
Which, that's why I'm not, but, okay, so that's the result of changes in family plans and all that kinda stuff too. So there were some changes from, uh, from the prior year in terms of people taking on healthcare that hadn't. I mean, again, I'm, I don't have a, a year or two's history with, with your employee base, but I was trying to look back and go, oh, so why would there be changes? Um, and you, when I was redoing the sheet, you had a somewhat different health plan than what was originally, how this sheet was originally built. With different numbers. And then, so, and then I went through every single person who did healthcare or buy out, you know, both dental and medical. And made sure that each one of these was correct, so the number, and then I, and then we did get these.
We, we don't have time.
Okay, but we did, I did put in the, um, the increase for health, which was, um, two point one percent.
Yeah.
So that gets, the, the figures get multiplied by point zero two one, and then it was the point three nine. So this does reflect that.
So, that's the HR, it's one point six eight nine.
It's, I mean, it's a, what is it, a three percent increase overall?
Eight, after you just changed it.
No, no, eight on that.
What? I don't know what you're asking.
You're talking about the healthcare increase.
Healthcare is overall is eight percent.
Right.
And all, no, no, overall budget increase is eight percent.
Oh, I see.
And so is, it looks like so, okay, right.
Right.
Right. We'll, we'll see an updated final version of this, right?
Yeah.
Just to compare to our notes.
Yes, cause you'll, as soon as you get a budget, you'll be voting on your budget, and what will happen is you'll amend it after.
Yeah.
So.
But I've made some notes, so I'll be kind of.
I don't know what you mean by notes.
I've, I've written down the numbers you've been giving us.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Versus the ones that were in the original printed draft.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't, honestly, we haven't made any changes except for one we just did.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It might not be a bad idea, at some point, I don't know that we've seen this in a long time or ever. Just to have a breakdown of employees per department, and we kind of, cause we talk about that, but we don't, at least I'm speaking for myself. Don't typically have day-to-day dealings with these departments, and so don't even have nece- necessarily faces to the names, or, you know. It would be helpful to have.
Tiny. It's in there.
It's like the actual employees?
Eight full-time.
Oh, it is in there, oh, okay.
It's really tiny.
Then that's probably why.
I was gonna say, I get it in there, but it's.
Blow that up for me, yeah. My glasses aren't that strong.
So any issues with HR questions, comments, concerns?
Not right now.
Okay. Um, we'll go to buildings and grounds now, which is. I have forty-five, am I wrong?
It's gonna be around. No, that's right.
Yep.
It must be like, um, something.
Oh, it's tiny.
Oh, it's tiny.
Yeah.
I have, oh, God, hold on.
I have old eyes.
We're seeing an increase of sixteen percent, or ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars, cause we don't use cents. The big one is part-time salaries.
Yeah.
And I'll let the director explain.
Yes, uh, so what this actually represents is, uh, we've actually, as part of this is an expense line. My entire salary is now listed in that line. Uh, prior year, my salary was offset, shown in that line as offset by the revenue that we take from the school to offset my pay. Which, it really needs to be represented in a revenue line, not in an expense line. So the adjustment was, this shows the expense, and elsewhere contained in the budget, um, is a revenue line that shows the revenue being taken in for that. So it's, it's not really a. Founded for, is in different spots, one's in revenue line and one is in an expense line.
That's correct, we have to budget for a hundred percent, and even though it's offset by revenue.
Is that to show the in and out, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah. Instead of just a wash.
If you're, if you're in private sector, you wouldn't do that, but in public sector, we have to.
Yep.
So that, that represents, uh, that, it, it's basically that difference, just because it's expense to revenue and different areas contained in the budget. Um, the part-time salaries, uh, are to cover, um, additional, um, needs for custodials. And other things that, as we continue to take care of our buildings, um, and some readjustments of where those are.
And the capital lease payments are for the performance contracts.
Correct.
That the council entered into.
And you'll notice in a lot of areas, you'll see some pretty significant decreases in electrical costs and heating costs and things like that. Although it, we are going into the first year, we don't have all the final numbers in place, but we will, uh, coming, going forward, so it, it actually shows some of that offset.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that the program where we were doing the energy savings?
Yes, so those two capital lease payments, one's for, um, the, uh, community center, and one is for the.
I'm sorry, what?
Very last, um.
Number?
I know, this is very small.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, down, down.
You'll see one, uh, a bowl, one is a, um.
Why are there two different lines?
Because one represents the community center.
There it is.
Um. This one, it doesn't say.
Uh, yeah, the eighteen thousand, four ninety, uh, five, excuse, four fifty-nine is just the community center lease.
Why didn't we put a community center on there?
Um, I suppose we could have. The other one is the town facilities, uh, the other town, town hall, police station, fire station, public works.
Then I had a question, is why did we split them?
Because they're two completely different projects done at two completely different times.
But we don't do by project here, we do it by line item.
Well, remember the community center job was already done and in place way before we started this one.
But.
They can be.
This should be one line, it should just be saying capital lease payments, and not have it by project.
Okay.
Cause if, we're getting way into the weeds.
Right.
So.
And those are the ones offset by the electrical.
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay.
And you'll notice some pretty substantial decreases, twenty-six percent, twenty-one percent.
Mm-hmm.
Sixty-one percent, so those are pretty substantial decreases in electricity and heating.
That's awesome.
And that's mainly the LEDs and the new boilers?
New boilers, LEDs, energy management control systems that are in place, yeah.
Okay, cool.
We're actually, starting next week, the solar array is being installed on top of the, uh, fire station, so that, that starts next week.
Are you finding that it's a one-to-one?
Um, well, not everything's a hundred percent yet, so we're still, we're about probably sixty-five, seventy percent in, in completion on the big project, so it's not one-to-one yet. It actually should be not one-to-one, it should be, actually, we should be gaining more, about twenty percent over the top of what guaranteed, uh, return is.
Is this on with what you had anticipated?
Yes.
Is the top level not better, or?
Uh, I think as we get further into completing the whole project, it's going to look better than, than what I can show you right today. Uh, and these numbers are based on today, not what I think it's gonna be, cause I don't, don't, uh, wanna go that route with it yet.
So I have a question about the salaries, if we could go back.
Sure.
Cause I don't know that I'm fully understanding the numbers at the moment. So. In the full-time salary, that is now representative of your full salary.
Correct. Correct.
Two positions in there.
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's...
The director, as well as the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds.
Correct.
Karen. Part-time are usually seasonal employees, or, as I said, part-time employees, which are custodial. So last year, we, we budgeted eighty-five thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars for it, we expended seventy thousand. This year, we only appropriated forty thousand for it. The department has proposed ninety-four thousand. I could say go down to the eighty-five, or seventy-five. We just have to manage it.
It's what we do. That's what council wants, that's how we make it work.
And that includes the school facility?
No.
No.
Okay, that's just the town, alright.
That's a completely separate budget.
Okay, just making sure.
You, I mean, you've, you've got some, some flexibility, because we, we did build in some seasonal part-time personnel into that, so.
I think you could do a reduction to seventy-five thousand.
So you're talking about changing your number?
Yeah, well, I can't change mine, I already presented to you.
Right.
The council has to change theirs.
Thank you for that.
Yes, so I would recommend that the council changes it from ninety-four seven thousand seven hundred down to seventy-five thousand.
Can we ask the finance director to comment on that?
It's not his call.
Okay.
It's Buildings and Grounds personally.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant Greg. I'm sorry, I said the wrong title, yeah.
Our, our goal is to try to increase our levels in, in not only just the summer seasonal help, but as all of our cleaning standards in our facilities. We struggle to, to get people, we also struggle to get certain areas done, because we don't have a, a very large staff. So this would aid us in hopefully getting more time for more staff or better cleaning levels and things like that, as well as providing more seasonal help that we really need, because of, the, the demand is there for our field maintenance and things like that, so. It, it, it would, it, I guess the way I'd say it is, I may do what I, what I have, but it would be helpful to be able to kinda increase those service levels.
We just don't have the money.
But, no, we really don't.
So, let's be honest here.
But I, I'm having a hard time understanding the numbers, though. To just, I'm, so in twenty nineteen, this says we appropriated eighty-five, and in twenty twenty, we appropriated forty.
Yeah.
Like, is that, how is that right? And then it's proposed ninety, I mean, I, like I said, my eyes are old and this is small print, but...
Seventy so far.
Yeah, so I just don't, I'm having a hard time understanding these numbers.
But you're suggesting seventy-five, which is yet another number, right?
Exactly, exactly, but yeah, I wanna make sure that these are accurate.
Let's not throw other numbers out there, let's put this one into court first.
Alright.
Because according to this, it's a difference of fifty-five thousand, I mean, it's a, you know what I mean?
I just wanna make sure we put the right number.
Yeah, did we really do forty last year?
I can't imagine.
I don't think, I don't think that's...
That's gotta be a mistake. It can't be right.
Eighty-eight.
Was last year.
Eighty-eight was last year.
We put in eighty-eight thousand, so...
That makes more sense.
Can I ask another, before we get to the, um, proposal?
Can I ask for a quick recess, because?
Yeah.
This is, this is gonna be a big problem for the whole budget, if we don't have right numbers.
Right.
And your question?
Thanks. Okay, after reviewing it, the appropriation was for fiscal year twenty twenty, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. So you're only seeing an increase of five thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars in that line.
Okay.
Yeah. So what you're seeing bottom line is an increase of seven percent over the previous, um, yeah, the number's still seven three eight, six four seven, or fifty thousand nine, uh, nine thirty-three, which is mainly moving the salary in from, to cover a hundred percent of the director, which we have to cover as a, in and out, as well as five thousand in part-time and five thousand in overtime. So it's thirty-five. Plus you have the, you see, the reductions are not covering the capital payments yet, the lease payments. So it's not a hundred percent, but we still have to make the payment, so that's the difference.
So are you withdrawing your recommendation?
I am.
Right, we don't wanna slash it to a point that it's unsustainable.
No.
Right.
Doesn't make sense.
And we will have a new finalize, before, when you get your resolution, you'll have your budget with any changes in it. So, yeah.
Can I ask a question, the offset by revenue that was mentioned earlier, what revenue is offsetting?
We get a, a revenue from the school, sixty percent of the salary is covered by the school.
Okay, even though we're no, okay.
No, he's still shared with the school.
Oh, okay, alright.
Only one position was no longer shared.
Okay, and that was finance, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Was there a question about the, um, twenty nineteen year-to-date actual?
No, that is actual.
So those are actuals, not, I, you know, I saw that and I saw year-to-date and, but it's twenty twenty, because we used to put the year-to-date number in the budget, like a bunch of years ago.
Oh, yeah, 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 year-to-date.
That's what I was, so I was like, how did it?
Year-to-date twenty twenty would be September.
Right, exactly.
So it's only one month, it doesn't really show anything.
Right, okay, because, yeah, I was confused with that as well.
So you have, that was just an extra column that...
Right.
It makes sense once you get to March, but when we do the budget, it makes no sense, because I only have one month.
Right.
So that's the...
So we should say actual, though, not year-to-date.
That's the actual number, not the year-to-date then.
No, because it's unaudited, so you can't say it's actual.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It's actual once it's audited.
Okay.
So it's year-to-date.
Okay.
For nineteen.
Okay.
Right. So then the custodial expense would also include school custodians?
No, no, that looks, we have nothing, I wanna make sure to clarify. We do not pay anything for the school through our, through this department. The school pays us to contract his services as director.
So it's just you?
That's it.
It's just his cell?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So, Buildings and Grounds.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I can tell you one good thing is, since I was not told this, that we can increase our revenue line to offset. We increased it on one side, but we didn't increase, we increased the s- the budget, but I didn't increase the revenue.
Oh.
Coming from the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that needs to be added.
Yeah, so we should be fine.
I just wanna say it's great to see all these, um, the, the LEDs end up actually showing up this early. I kinda wasn't sure if it would actually be visible in the numbers, but that, that's really cool.
Yeah, it's, it's starting to show, I mean, the, the first thing that we got done was LEDs, the lighting, so it really started to show right off the bat.
I think that would be good to show people that those things actually show up in the numbers, it's not just a theory, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and very fast.
Yeah.
Like, it's great.
You gotta fix it, it's only using a quarter of what the other one was, it shows up quick.
When did we start that, when did you start that project?
Uh, we actually started, uh, kinda in August for, uh, for some of it, some of it was prior, like the lighting, like in this building was August, and then, uh, we had a few things that we did prior to that, um, some stuff at Public Works, some of the exterior lighting at Public Works, and, um, and the HVAC was done here ahead of time, so a lot of that got handled up earlier in the game. We're, pretty much all of the lighting is done, we're still working on energy management control systems, as well as, um, uh, some of the other updates that we're working on for just how the systems are controlled, to make sure we optimize them.
And when do you expect all of these projects to be completed?
I would, uh, my goal right now is to have them all done by the end of November.
Can you send us a note when the, um, solar array goes up?
I will be happy to.
I'm gonna go take some pictures, so it'll be very exciting. I'm excited that we, you know, that you brought this program to Newmarket and, and have implemented these savings, because I think it's really important for the community, for the environment. So it's, it's great to see the, the savings and, and just to see us moving forward as a community. Thank you. Any other?
Buildings and Grounds being done.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a wonderful day.
You two will get water and sewer in. So fifty-nine and sixty. Just to remind everybody that water and sewer are not funded by taxation, they're funded by the rate paid. And we will have some changes right now as well. Bill?
Sorry.
Water and sewer?
Yes, water and sewer. Water, page fifty-nine, we're looking at, um, if you go to the line... FICA?
Yep.
It's, the new number is, oh, wow, just giving you the change, sorry, hold on a second. FICA line. Is twelve four two five.
Okay. Which other ones are we changing?
It's water, and that's, um, Medicare.
Yep.
And that's two nine oh five, well, two nine oh six, because we're...
Yeah. So that was minimal, I mean, it was a slight increase. So the bottom line is one million twenty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, an increase of one hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars, and I'll let the environmental services director address the increase.
The, um, main increases on the, uh, water department was, uh, salary, full-time salaries. The biggest portion of that is, the, uh, water department is now, uh, paying for ten percent of the IT person.
CFO, both, combined position, CFO, IT.
Yeah, yeah, OIT, yeah.
Not just IT?
IT, OIT, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, CFO.
CFO, yes, yes, okay, right here.
Yes.
So, and, um, health insurance was a slight increase. The major, other major ones was the, uh, capital, capital reserve, um, some improvements we're looking to do. And then the interest for, um, that's to, uh, help cover, well, to cover interim financing for all the projects we're doing. There's a couple decreases, which is in chemicals, um, and, um, which is the most notable.
Any impacts of tariffs in your area, like there is for...
On all the projects we're doing, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow. Can you remind me about the CIO, sharing the CIO costs on this part of the budget?
Okay, not CIO, but the finance director is now being reached. So, a percentage of my salary is covered by water and sewer, because I'm the administr- town administrator, I oversee water and sewer.
Okay.
My philosophy is, the finance director oversees the finances of water and sewer, they should be paying a percentage of the finance director's fee.
Finance director, okay. Thank you, makes sense.
So chemicals have gone down. Are you expecting any increases because of, like, new standards that have been put in place? Like, what, where do you see that?
The biggest thing that I see coming down the line that, that water department's gonna be working on is we have to do a vul- vulnerable, see how vulnerable we are and address those issues. We also have to do some, uh, work on, uh, wellhead protection programs. The other large things down the line is we're addressing, which is arsenic, which that's the new water treatment facility, which we will, uh, this new standard is five, and with the new facility, we'll be down around zero. The last thing is, uh, the PFOS, PFOA chemicals. However, we've been testing for those, and that's the additional testing. I think you're gonna see more and more testing that's gonna come into play for us, which is gonna be expensive. But we, so far have not shown any PFOAs in the town drinking water. So we're pretty lucky compared to a lot of places around the state, so that's, that's where we are.
So it'll be in, in the testing that we'll probably see the increases?
Yes, yes.
Sir, anything that you're aware of at this time that would cause that to change, those results to change?
Not that I can foresee, no.
Okay.
Like I said, we're very lucky.
I, I know you don't guarantee it, but I didn't, if you were aware of something.
No, I've not, I'm not aware of anything that would cause that. The only spot we see it now is actually in the wastewater sludge that we ship out, the PFOAs are in. So, and that's gonna hit the wastewater department.
Where does that come from?
People.
People flushing stuff?
No, it's, it's in you and me, it's in everything.
Oh, it's in us?
Yeah. It's also, it's also when you use, uh, non-stickware. So you, on your dishes and on your, I mean, it's in your carpet, it's in all that stuff, fire retardant stuff, yeah.
And all kinds of cookware, I mean, we, I went to a presentation recently, I was, I was surprised by even like, like wraps that sandwiches are in, and, you know, it's not just your non-stick pans.
No.
Yeah.
For postage, are you planning on sending out more mailings this year, because we were quite a bit under last year, and there's an increase?
Postage is a, um, I'm anticipating that there could be an increase from the post office, one. The other, it's also depend on, on how many notices we send out, because, uh, shut-off notices or late payments or... We also do postage, uh, mailings if something happens, if we have a, uh, bacteria hit or something, so we have to have money in there for that as well.
I know those could be big, unexpected costs, so I guess that's the buffer zone, more or less.
It's significant, though. Twenty-four, less than twenty-four hundred in twenty nineteen to forty-one hundred.
Council. Level funds it at thirty-seven hundred. And it's one of those one we have to do.
I know, I know.
And it's, yeah, it's, it's small dollars.
I know.
I actually, I actually, I'm lost. Postage, page is postage on... Postage number, there it is, five, page five.
I know, a couple hundred bucks, but, yeah.
I guess, what, what are you looking for, Sean?
I actually have, I have everything broken down on how I did it, and I just gotta find the correct page that I did it on.
Can we go back to thirty-seven hundred and just leave it?
You can, I mean, if, if I go, if I spend it, yeah, it's, I mean, it's...
So minus four hundred there.
Yeah, okay, that's, basically, it's, um, it, it's my account, uh, so it's my billings for when I charge people for, uh... So it's my billings for when I charge people for, um, water bills, it's all the water bills. It's, um, so that's two thousand accounts divided by two at fifty-five cents. It's friendly reminders, which is people that don't pay their bills on time, which is two hundred, um, at fifty-five cents. And then informational flyers, which is your consumer confidence reports. And, um, I think we might've spent a little less last time around because we found other ways to get those consumer confidence reports out. So, um, and then that comes out to, um, and then correspondence, stuff we have to send to EPA, stuff we have to send to the state. And it came out to four thousand twenty dollars. And I ended up saying forty-one hundred. That's how I broke it down.
Okay.
It's the wish of the council.
I mean, a small change, but I would, I would lean towards a little money because there was still an extra fifty percent that wasn't spent last year.
So reduce postage by four hundred dollars. Any other changes? Okay, we can flip the page to sewer. We've seen a decrease of forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. Most of it is bonds and notes, the bond payments are going down.
Are there any changes here with salary?
Oh yeah, we have to do one too as well.
Yeah, there's a, there's a few here. So.
We need the.
It's accurate. You have, uh, the fir- the first one is the, the full-time salary line needs to go down. Two, three, two, six, eight, zero, one. Or eight, zero, two, rounding out.
Okay.
Then. Then your FICA line goes up.
What's the number?
Um, no, hold on.
I need the numbers.
Keep looking at the, the orange here. So your FICA line goes to twenty-two nine seven three.
Medicare?
Medicare goes to five, three, seven, three.
Retirement?
Retirement is. Four, one, four, four, six. That's it.
So it's two million three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars for a reduction of forty-one thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars.
Can you say that number, the proposed number again?
Two million three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred ninety-seven.
Thanks.
And I can tell you that the department had differences, was not a million dollars. On the bottom of the budget.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. It was forty-one, whatever, the forty-three thousand or something like that. Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty sure a million dollars.
A million dollars, we would've had a, yeah.
Two percent difference.
I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory, it's a reduction of two percent.
Yeah.
Right, the only thing, big thing we are seeing is increase in sludge disposal. And I think it, and that goes back to my other thing about solid waste.
We, we actually just, that's the three-year contract we entered into. And just as a side note, we received the highest our cost is per ton of sludge is a hundred and eight dollars. Six months later, Exeter got one, one thirty-five per ton. And that's because of the PFOS and stuff, so.
Wow.
So you're anticipating for the next contract?
We are, we are also, we just did a pilot on trying to get our sludge drier. So we're actually working on a possible project to try and increase our dryness of our sludge, which would reduce the cost.
The volume, yeah.
At the net, so.
Yeah.
We're trying to get that done before we get that next contract.
Is the sludge quantities going up significantly?
Um, they bounce around depending on what, how dry you can get it.
Oh, okay.
You know.
Is it weight or volume?
It's weight. So if the drier you get it, the cheaper it is.
Makes sense.
Any questions on sewer?
Um, the heat and oil?
Yes.
Was a significant increase? Just overall cost, or is there, was there?
It's based on what we currently have now.
Okay.
So, you know, we built the plant two years ago and we were chasing what that cost was gonna be.
Yeah, the actual cost last year was twenty-five thousand nineteen.
Okay. Yep.
Now, wasn't oil a little bit cheaper last year? I guess, does this give us flexibility if it goes up?
But last year's operations was not a full year of operation of the.
Oh, okay.
We're now into full year, the year before when we did night fifteen, we didn't have a full year of operation. We are now in full year operation, we know it's twenty-five.
It's, it's really difficult budgeting for the water and sewer because they're a year out and things can change so quickly.
Yeah.
We're all year out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, when it actually.
I mean, we all budget on nineteen.
Yeah, and it's, it's really.
We don't know what's gonna happen the end of twenty.
And then, and then if I get a lot of rain, you know, the water, I don't sell, I don't do as much water.
The same if there's a lot of snow.
And then, but the wastewater has, gets a lot of water because of all the rainfall. If I, it's really dry, then the wastewater doesn't treat as much, but the water, I pump a lot. So my costs change according to how the weather is.
But twenty-five is, is a comfortable place to be if there was a, an anticipated like increase in oil?
Well, we're just gonna have to.
We just eat it.
We're just gonna have to figure it out.
Oh, we can, yeah.
We'll have to say, well, we don't do that project.
Understand, right, understand, if we have a, if, if, which are not, usually happens in a presidential year, it has nothing to do with the president. We hit a, we have a recession or the economy strikes a tank, just happens with every presidential election. We will stop spending or the worst-case scenario layoffs if the budget comes into that point.
Okay.
It's, we, if we're at twenty-five and we, you know, then that would be like the huge over, overall thing. Five thousand here, five thousand there, we, we can find, but if it's something huge, we, we have to do. I remember bef- the year before I got here, they did a spending freeze in the middle of March. So we just do that, we manage the budget. That's, so you, the, I've seen communities, the worst-case scenario is you don't open things on certain days. Because we save money.
What year was that, that the freeze happened?
I started in twelve, so it was eleven, so it was right after the, um.
Okay.
The Great Recession.
Yeah.
So.
I feel like we did that more than once, no? Was that the only?
No, when I was here, yeah.
No, you didn't, okay.
There's been some towns when we've been close to a budget.
Oh, we were close last year.
Yeah, it's just happened.
Extremely close.
I mean, you do the best you can.
Right.
Some of the other decreases, not that I'm questioning decreases, I just want to understand them. Like the permits and engineering is.
New plant? Uh, the permits.
That's what it's.
That's based on our sampling in the river and anything we have to do for, uh, the EPA.
Okay.
So that's base, that's an actual number.
Okay. Cause any cost with the new plant would've been in a different, it would've been in the project.
The increase you're seeing, this is the first year where it's increasing the budget. Because fiscal year nineteen was the end of the year when we had the, the plant a hundred percent?
No, we actually, this is our, actually going into our third year.
Oh, cause you're running two.
Wait, wait, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Remember, the fiscal year starts on July one. Plan opened, so eight, two thousand eighteen.
July is seventeen it opened.
A hundred percent?
A hundred percent, it started the twenty-eighth of July.
So it wasn't this, it was eighteen it opened?
Yeah, full, yes, I was missing a month, it was eleven months.
So then we had to do the budget in nineteen, a month later, so we didn't know what the actuals were. So you're seeing the first year actuals for fiscal year nineteen.
And, and keep in mind, when I told you we were gonna start this plant, I told you it was gonna take three to five years to truly understand the cost. Because we haven't run it the same every single year.
With respect, none of these people were here.
Yeah.
When you told the council at the time.
Yeah, told the council at the time.
I was around, I was around.
I mean, they weren't sitting here.
But, um, that, that's what, that's, so we're running it differently every year because we're trying to figure out what the best way to run it is. Or if a problem happens and we have to make a change, we know what will happen when we make that change. So it takes three to five years to really start to work out, figure out what the best way to run that plant is. Electrical-wise, sludge production-wise, there's, there's, it's just not turn it on and let it roll.
But it's clearly getting better because the number's going down and not up.
Yes, yes, we're figuring it out, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
So, anything, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's eleven thirty.
Enjoy your Saturday.
Yeah, we can do one of two things. You can take a break or we can hammer out a bunch of these like assessor, legal, the tiny ones that, and we maybe take fifteen minutes. And then take a fifteen-minute break before noon.
That's fine, that's okay.
Okay? Okay.
Do you, what?
I was gonna say, we should do all the small stuff.
Okay.
Let's start on thirty, what I have is thirty-two, assessing. Our assessing is contracted.
Thirty-one.
Uh, thirty-one.
Thanks, thirty-one, again, I don't.
You all right over there?
Yeah, I'm fine. Assessing is an increase of three percent, contract increased. And we know we're gonna have an increase in the software cost for operations, so. Just to let everyone know, when we got, when I first got here, there was a full-time person in this department and now it's contracted. And we actually get more service because we have contracted services there. Any issues with assessing? Okay. Moving to the next page, legal. Uh, increase of fi- a thousand for, um, contract, again. When I first got here seven years ago, we were spending a hundred and fifty plus. Cause we had a gr- agreement that was on an hourly basis, we have our council on retainer. So we pay a flat fee and just whatever he does, he works. Which is, you know, I was talking to some managers this week and they go, how's that work? I go, it's basically, we have a department head that we can call for legal advice and they answer right away, so. It's really working well. Next, planning. Uh, two percent increase, it's just salary adjustment from the merit pool last year. So nothing overly huge there. If, if anybody wants to stop, just tell me and we'll stop, do it that way.
Okay, sure.
Conservation is a decrease of sixty-four dollars or two percent.
Excellent.
So, we'll just go from there. Next, economic development, no change, thirty thousand. Well, you're gonna be getting a report from the economic development consultant. We're trying to set up the meeting of the planning board sometime in late, you know, probably early December because of the holidays coming up.
So what would the thirty thousand be for?
Consulting still.
Consulting?
Yeah. So when I, when we decided to go with economic development consultant, there was talk about having the economic development director on staff. My philosophy is, yeah, it's great when there's an economic boom to have a set person on staff, but when you hit the skids, you have an e- a employee that's not doing his, it doesn't, it's not their fault, but they're just not doing as much work. What do you have, so I was like, let's try the consultant for now and it seems to be working. Debt principal. Hundred percent increase, that's due to the McAllen Dam. Can't do anything. Debt interest. It, um, increase to, by thirty. Right, nothing, we gotta pay the debt. So you look like you wanna ask a question?
Why does it say propose two hundred and, to a hundred for the debt principal?
Principal.
What?
Propose two hundred, a difference of a th- hundred thousand. I propose two hundred, which is in a case of hundred thousand over previous year.
Oh, cause we had a hundred thousand, okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking we were at zero.
Right. Yep. Yep.
Sorry.
The next page is IT. It's a reduction of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars, which is the salary. But what you see is they're still remaining is because I'm going to propose the combination of CFO and CIO into one position. But you also see is the contracted services is up to fifty-one thousand. So the CIO, the finance director's now gonna oversee the contracted services for IT.
Right, I was a CIO prior to joining this organization, so.
So he has the background.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like a, yeah. We, we'll discuss that another time.
And I just, remind me, do, did I understand right that we have to show, we have to show the in, in and out by splitting it into different parts of the budget?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, it's required?
Yes.
Okay.
To be honest, um, the contracted services is working pretty well. It's one of those situations, we have more hands on deck, so we're gonna continue that for now. Um, any questions there? Channel thirteen's the next one. Um, hard-time salary is increasing, we, we're filming more things. However, we do get a revenue from, uh, Comcast to offset this, the franchise fees. So, uh, we actually make more than what is going towards this, so. So we could be filming even more.
Oh, really?
No. I don't wanna push it on, so. We, we usually bring in about, was it seventy-five thousand?
Hmm, I think that's about right.
A year for franchise fees?
But we have to be putting something on there, basically.
Yeah, yeah. So if everybody sees on their budget, on their bill, it says franchise fee charged by the town of, that's what, what it is. Um, I'm gonna figure out the next one. Think we go to fifty, which is grants? It's a two percent increase, um, the Veterans Memorial is requesting a thousand dollars.
What page are you on?
I said fifty.
Oh, fifty, sorry.
Yeah. Could be off?
It's fifty.
It's fifty, okay. That's all the local, uh, civic organizations, not so much the, the next one will be the charitable.
And they have to apply for those?
No, these do not, these are.
These do not, okay.
Ones that we provide to the smaller groups in town that usually offsets some kind of service. Once we get to social service grants, they apply.
And the festival support, that was the, um, Old Home Day and Heritage.
I know you answered this last year, what's the Hand Tub Association?
It, it, the firehouse.
Okay, gotcha, so.
And the Veterans Memorial went up?
Yes.
Is that a request?
Yes.
Okay, cause did we not, did they not spend it the year prior?
They did not.
Okay. We're still having those festivals?
Um, we're doing other civic, we don't call it the fest- it's, we have a festival one, but we do other things like the, it goes towards a Christmas or it goes towards those kind of events.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Would that be the banners that they hang downtown?
No, it used, it used to be economic development for that.
Um, could you elaborate for me a little bit on coast? Um, so I brought it up last year, I know that we provide, um, they obviously cut their service down to more of an on-demand.
Yep.
Do you have any insight on, in our investment in, in the coast program, providing the services? Have you seen much of either a?
I have not heard any complaints.
No complaint, okay, that's fair.
But I, when they were discussing changing the service, it was a huge issue for those who use it.
Yeah.
Um, I could tell you that what we're paying is, yeah, we're getting, getting the use of the service.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So they give you ridership reports and stuff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the board.
For coast?
Yeah. The town has a seat, so.
What's the turnaround if you request a radio, it's like twenty minutes or something?
Don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next one, insurance, property and liability insurance, it's now its own department, because it used to be in uh, HR for some reason. It has nothing to do with human resources.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a de- a decrease of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, or nine and thirty dollars.
That's when this insurance go down.
I know.
We don't use it.
In my, it goes down. So that's, that one, social service grants. This is usually the controversial, um, it's a, I am reducing it by four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. The reason is that, one, I did not receive some requests. Um, or, and, but there is a slight increase for child and family services. They requested a thousand more, and Richie McFarland requested two thousand.
There's a little pop on this.
That doesn't seem right.
The math isn't right?
Nope.
Which one?
So, social service grants, if I have an increase of two, three thousand, thirty-five hundred, thirty-nine, and only decrease in a thousand, it's not a decrease of four thousand nine hundred and twenty.
The bottom one.
I can see where the recommendation last year was fifty-one thousand four hundred, which was appropriated, and I am reduce it to si- forty-six, four eight zero. I need to know, I can't move on.
I can ask you a question in the meantime?
Absolutely.
Um, how do they go about applying for these social service grants?
So we have an application that requires them to provide us with their audited financial statements, the proof of that they're not for profit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the number of individuals and new market that they serve.
Okay.
Um, it's actually a pretty intense question here.
Okay.
Um, if every, we've got stacks of them for everybody, and we go through it to make sure everything is accurate. When I first got here, it was just, anybody put in, they would give them the money or they wouldn't, um.
Okay, so they have to be serving new market residents?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The controversial one that I did a few years ago, and I still will bring this up. Lampy Healthcare, we provide them with ten thousand dollars as a grant, but we also provide them with ninety thousand dollars that they don't have to pay in taxes. Because they're a non-ta- they're, they're nonprofit, so I, if you, anybody remembers that a few years ago.
I remember.
I recommended not giving them the grant because we do not charge them taxes. So we're giving them a hundred thousand dollars.
Why do we not give Linky other any money?
They don't want, they don't request.
Okay. Linky other.
What is uh, typically the period we're going to your, um, you're receiving requests, do you just say, hey, we're working on a project?
Nope, deadline, uh, I do it July, and they have to get to me by the second week in August usually.
So they have more than enough time that you can look?
Oh, yeah.
So this is everyone who's requested prior, and then they request every year?
Uh, some are new.
Some are new.
We do get requests renew, so.
And so they're applying to every town that they're servicing?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
You gotta.
So. Formula error, looking to the wrong call.
Okay, so what's the actual numbers? That's what we need. So you're gonna ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I wanna ask about the specific ones that we appropriated last year, but then, um, they're not or they're either, they're not getting any funds, or it's been reduced. So the area homemakers did not apply.
Did not reply.
And we didn't, it looks like we appropriated it in twenty nineteen, but then, yeah, okay.
They didn't accept it.
Um, RSVP, I don't even know what that is, let's.
I think that's a senior group, I don't, they didn't.
But they didn't.
They didn't apply. I'm very strict, if you don't apply, you do not. Yeah, money?
But these are the ones that we'll hear about.
Oh, yeah.
More than any other items, so I wanna make sure that we, uh, go through these. Um, is that it?
Big Brother, this, no, that's just.
New Generation did not get an application.
Oh.
One Sky Community was new last year.
Did you say Big Brother this year?
Oh, yeah, they've been going for years.
Okay.
So it's, well, I don't wanna say it's wrong, what I'm saying is that it's, it's looking for the, just, uh, it's, it's looking for that proposed column.
We had one there last.
Fine, it's.
So it says, what did you propose? And it looks at what was appropriated from the prior year, and what's the difference? And so your difference between those two years is negative forty-nine twenty.
Yeah.
That looks correct, but why is, but if you add up the, the one.
Because it, it, one doesn't look at the other, it's not, it's not a sum column, it's a, it's a.
Something above it's wrong.
But this is, but like, I, but the average person reading this will look as a sum column and say, oh, wait, that doesn't make sense.
Well, what we're trying, okay, I get you.
Yeah, so that's why, so it is a still reduction of ten percent.
I, I understand that. But you are reducing your, because of, things have changed, you didn't have some things, is that correct, that came in?
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's still a reduction.
Um, mind if I ask, somebody applies and they're accepted, do you just cut a check from the town straight to them?
No.
Okay.
They have to request it as well down July first. After July first, the fiscal year begins, we have to receive a letter from them requesting the funds, if they do not request the funds, we do not provide them with the funds.
Okay.
And it's possible, like in the case of New Generation, that they just had no new market, former new market residents?
They just never requested.
Or they just never requested, okay.
Yeah.
But if they di- weren't serving any new market residents, then they would no longer, that's the problem with the homeless shelters, they never know who they're going to get, who's gonna become homeless.
So. Usually if it's a homeless shelter, they'll do it on average.
Okay.
So like, for some reason, we never sent anybody to crossroads last year, they would still say, hey, look, what, we still service you because of X, Y, Z.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that makes sense, but if it's, we, the nine times out of ten, we don't get a request, has nothing to do with the service they provide. Cause I, they even say, go, oh, we forgot to request it.
Okay, so I'm thinking of something like Seacoast Family Promise, which is out of Exeter, but the churches in the area, we house them in New Market five weeks out of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So would they qualify or not qualify? Cause they're not act- those residents at the moment, those people at the shelter.
I'd have to, I'd, I'd have to fill out the, I can't, I don't wanna say it right here.
Okay. Okay, so I think I'll ask you for one of those.
Yeah.
Do you mind if, uh, if I just ask, so twenty nineteen, we appropriated fifty-one four.
Yep.
We've put out thirty-eight four. The, the money that doesn't get appropriate, just, just in the account?
Funded out. Yep, nope, goes, I, goes in the surplus.
Okay. Thank you.
So at the end of the year, if there's any money left over, it doesn't stay, there's not an account that it stays in, it gets all washed into what we call fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
And to be honest, uh, also, the numbers they request are not the numbers that we put in, I can change those. Cause like, some of them will request numbers like sixty thousand dollars, I'm like, no, we're not.
You can have a thousand.
Right, exactly.
Right, yep.
Any further on the grants?
No.
Okay. Next one, or you got, I think, let's see what we have left. Two.
Do we want, okay.
We have one, patriotic purposes, I increased it by five hundred dollars, this is for flags and for parade.
Flags and what?
Parade. Memorial Day Parade.
Should there be an account description underneath there, cause it's like a blank area?
Yeah, it, it should be, that's, as I see it, something's wrong with the.
Okay.
Yeah. Something with capades wrong.
Does that include the veterans' um, flags at the cemeteries, or is that in, under their budget for the veterans?
I believe that, yes, as part of that as well.
Okay.
Oh.
It was a great parade, so.
Yeah. So, fifteen minute break?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The, I always try to get it close to what we would be able to take from fund balance and put in there. As you know, our fund balance right now is at our minimum level, so I cannot uh, fund it as high as I want. So all of this money is coming through taxation, which is not what I tend to do, uh, cause fund balance is usually a one-time contribution. So I put it against this, but we do need to con- still contribute to these areas, so that's why I did increase it slightly, but not as much as the committee would request it, which is traditional.
Absolutely.
And the Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee is here as well.
Hi, Russ.
Should I start you after?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you guys for inviting CIP to make that presentation and the discussion about it. Answer any questions if we can. I wanted to just take a little moment upfront to reiterate a little bit more about what Steve said. But I wanted to thank the committee members. Uh, CIP is comprised of uh, two at-large members and then both primary and backup members for most of the other committees, uh, including the school board, uh, the planning board, the town council, the budget committee. Um, there Eric Bottoming, Jim Ford, myself, Al Zink, Kim Sheldon, Amy Burns, Jonathan Piper, Joe Momatina, and Christian Matthews. Uh, we also get a huge amount of technical support um, from Diane Hardy, who runs us uh, and plans out our process and does all the backup work, Greg Miles, Susan Frick, who's in the back of the audience, Susan Jordan as well. They all do a great job and keep us on track. I wanted to go over the uh, just a quick purpose of CIP for those who may not be as used to it. But it's a long-range planning document. Uh, it outlines at a minimum the expected capital expenditures for the next six years or beyond for the projects throughout both the town and the school. The school has been added in in the last few years. It is supposedly there to implement the community's long-term planning goals with specific facility improvements. And it's aimed at increasing or maintaining the town's infrastructure and capacity for growth. It also has links with the master plan. If you do a master plan, you're supposed to do a CIP. Legally, in addition, if you do impact fees, um, you have to also do a CIP. That's how we've corralled the school over the past several years to start to participate. And so I've been doing this, I don't know, six, seven years now. Um, and when we started, it was a process that took six months. It started in August and ended in January with both the school and the town having different dates and different deadlines and moran articles. And over the years, through changes to the dates as well as the process, we now do it in less than two months. We start in the middle of August and we're usually complete by, uh, at least speaking by October first.
Yeah.
And then a week or two to put the materials together that you got to.
If, if I may, as the council knows, we did put in a charter amendment to require. It, it, it's not against this current committee, cause the current committee pretty much hits it on every time. It's just gonna require that they have to submit it a month before I have to submit the budget to the council, so I can include it in there and do more review. Um, in the past, I would be si- we'd be sitting in here and the committee would bring it in. I'm like, well, we can't have it this way. We have to have it as part of the overall budget. So it's just to basically codify what we're doing. And if anything were, you know, the committee were to change, it gives them a deadline that you have to do it by this day.
So it works well. It pushed everybody through the process. I also wanted to uh, thank all the superintendent schools, Steve, and certainly the department heads. I've put a lot of effort into this. It's time they get to be able to say, here's what I need to Steve and you guys, and I think they do a, an excellent job. I'd say one of the other purposes of CIP besides changing into the master plan and the impact fees and the infrastructure is personally this year, it's reminded me of the aging process. As you can see, there are certain body parts through the use that are reaching the end of their useful life. And so reaching the end of your useful life is one of the keys to CIP. There's new projects to end up saying, gee, what do we wanna do in recreation or put something new that we haven't had before? But as Steve well knows, maintaining our infrastructure in town uh, is huge. And it had been a lower priority for many years, so that's starting to catch up with us. We reviewed fifty-two uh, project or equipment listing requests. Forty-six of them from the town, totaling the request for funds this year to fund them of one point nine million. And six from the school for a total of about three hundred and sixteen thousand. Nothing in the CIP book talks about any of the existing projects that are going on around town that are funded by bonds. So you may see a footnote or two here about the school bond issue. You may see some notes of Shaun's on bonding issues. But none of the fifty-two that are in here are currently bonded. That doesn't mean they will be. They may be just simply paid out of capital. But um, you don't have a report on all the outstanding bonds and the progresses. That's about it. I mean, I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, if you have any questions. I'm not the expert on all the particular projects, but I may be able to speak to them. I know Amy spent an awful lot of time, uh, which I appreciate, on the DVD this year. And other than that, uh, it's open for discussion.
If you want to, I can explain the lines that we have in there. So when, when I first got here, the, the problem that we had for capital reserve funds is that we were using it more as a savings account and not for specific projects. To the point where, you know, the Chair remembers that certain councils would say, well, Steve, what's that money in there for? I go, I don't know. There's not enough history to tell me what those projects supposed to be. It's supposed to be used for specific projects, not as a catch-all. And we're trying to get out of that, using them and start to build it back to be a real fund that you have specific projects and that's what you're funding. A lot of these, the, the drastic differences are, we just can't do everything at once. So for example, you have the Public Works requesting twenty-eight thousand, no, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to replace in the vehicle replacement fund.
Sorry, which page do you look at?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Okay.
The fund has a, a significant amount of money in there, and I said fund it back to seventy-five thousand. But if you also remember that we're discussing changing the way we purchase vehicles. Because we currently pay cash for vehicles. It's not what businesses, especially municipalities of our size do. They lease the vehicles, and once the vehicle's done, you replace it. It gets it on an automatic replacement schedule.
As long as it's on a full buyout.
Exactly. It's usually a dollar purchase at the end. So that's why we're trying to reduce that as well. It also stabilizes the way we budget, because you're gonna have always this one payment in the budget for a lease payment for a vehicle. Building improvements, we took a lot of the funds and put it, if you remember last year, I believe it was last year, maybe the year before, we created, we used to go to this building capital reserve fund anytime like a window broke or we had to fix a door and you, and the coun- I had to come to the council, not because it was over my expenditure authority, but I can't withdraw the money from the capital reserve fund. So the council decided, you know what, that doesn't make good operational sense. Put the money in the operation budget so we can fix things while we're working. A, a lot of the time, we'd come in and say, oh, yeah, we already fixed that door, but you have to approve it. Well, what if you don't? Good question. So that's why we reduced that down to fifteen, because you put a lot of those funds into the operations. The other thing is, we're doing a lot of the projects through the energy, the uh, performance uh, contract that we have for the energy. You saw the savings we're already starting to see, uh, from changing things over. Uh, road improvements, I left it at two hundred and fifty. It's what we need to do. I mean, we are catching up. We're do- if anybody remembers from ten years ago, where we are now, we're doing a lot more roads. And that also is supplemented by the five-dollar fee that you get on the, uh, you pay when you register your car. So we also have additional funds to do roads.
I think Steve, you do it on page fifteen also.
Yeah, in my budget, yeah.
Maybe a simpler form.
Yeah. Uh, the next is stormwater management. I level funded it, cause we need to start, we need to address that. There'll probably be larger projects at some point. Fire department, again, we need to start looking the way we've, we purchased vehicles. They were trying to put all the money in the cash aside. We're gonna end up side on lease it. Police vehicles, this is seven dollars. Um, police vehicles are not a capital expense. I know it's hard to believe, but we replaced, replaced police vehicles on an annual basis. That's an oper- that's an operation expense, even though there is that cost of forty-five thousand.
Is there a reason you chose to put seven dollars into these?
He wanted to keep the account open.
Okay.
That we, so what happens if we had a default budget? And we went back, there would be no money, it, it shows zero. He put that in, it showed, yes, there was some money in there. So I said, okay, I'll give him, throw him seven dollars.
Well, there also is a requirement, you know, I, I would love to make a recommendation, which you told me in the past when I said that, yeah, it's not the law.
Yeah.
That you have to have a separate capital account for each of these items. We can't have a general fire and rescue, or much less a general town, that allows you, which I prefer, allows you as the town council to say, we have this much money, we have these priority projects. It may change from time to time. It's you guys who in theory know the most about that. Rather than having three hundred underfunded capital accounts, each one that have seven dollars in it. And you go and say, gee, I don't have enough money there to pay for this thing. So, you know, as Steve said, we'll lease it or we'll put it in operations or things of that nature.
Hey, the, the classic for that one, and I explained it to him, that for the police vehicle, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that fund. So a cruiser costs forty thousand, forty-five thousand. I would even give him fifty. We could buy three cruises without having to impact the tax rate. The next is, let me first put the front budget. Uh, police dispatch, yeah, we, that's one of those ones that if something goes down, we need some money in there. We would have some expenses trying to replace things. Uh, the Veterans Memorial Trust, it's two thousand. It's money that they're gonna be building a memorial. Hopefully, as I look at the library, somebody in the library land. At some point in time to honor the veterans in town, so we can put the money aside. The three-hundredth anniversary expendable trust, so when I got here, I looked at what, I looked at the seal and realized that twenty-twenty-seven is coming up. So since two thousand and twelve, we've been putting two thousand dollars a year into this trust fund. So then twenty-twenty-seven, they'll have feeder money to have a party for the th- uh, three-hundredth anniversary. So, um, the next is recreational facilities. I have to double check that one. I think it's, oh, I, I believe we're replacing um, fencing and park and the, a s- park equipment somewhere, and I don't have it off my head.
Well, they have a variety of projects from the splash pad and bathrooms to upgrading the uh, um, the seating. Um, and being able to, you know, do a variety of fieldwork. This, this section, if you're interested in just the, what the projects are, quickly, I think if you look at page thirty, I think we have it listed in thirty-two to thirty-four, though there may be some, you know, items in facilities uh, that we said if it's a facility-related issue, even though it's recreation, put it in the facilities. And I think the ones that are in the book at the moment are a large permanent shade and rain shelter for the courts, which I think maybe is one of the ones we deferred. A splash pad and permanent restrooms at Leo LaRoche for kids. Some vehicles and picnic table replacements.
Right. So, I don't want people to think that when we cut the numbers down to these levels, that they don't have funds. Because on the contrary, like I said, fire has two hundred and seventy thousand dollars sitting in a fund for uh, equipment. The library has eighty-seven thousand dollars. Police vehicles, as I said, a hundred and sixty. Dispatch has a hundred and sixty. Building improvements currently has a hundred and forty-three. Municipal transportation fund is two hundred and nineteen. Recreation facility is a hundred and fifty-seven. Community recreation is eighty-six. So eh, just to show, there is money out there that they have. We just need to start using the funds we have. We have over four million dollars in capital reserve funds.
Yeah, and to Steve's point, a couple of things, and then just, I know most of you are aware, maybe not all of you. The library has a separate trust fund.
Yep.
And a set of trustees that are outside these numbers. And how that money is used is up to the trustees, uh, but it's been used in the past for some major upgrades of the building. Since we put the recreation department, when I used to have my budget committee had on, uh, on the enterprise fund concept. The concept of the recreation department is the town pays for the senior salaries related to developing the overall program. But that the rest of the program, both its capital through grants and its own money generation, as well as activities, should be paid for by the fees. And I think they've done a great job. So if you look at one of Amy's sheets, if you just, example, turn to page thirty-three for the sake of argument, to Steve's point. If you look down uh, on page thirty-three of the CIP book, the full year twenty-twenty-one, for the three hundred and ninety-eight thousand that they're looking for to fund the splash pad and permanent restroom project, seventy-five is coming from capital reserves. Hopefully, grants may produce another two hundred thousand. The enterprise fund itself would be producing a hundred thousand through its fee revenue and impact fees. So they're looking for all sources of funds. To Steve's point, it's just not necessarily capital. But rec is somewhat special in being able to go out in twelve different directions at the same time. I don't know if that helps your point, Steve?
Hmm. Any questions on the contributions?
My only comment is that the committee has done a really thorough job and it's gotten, over the years, just better and better and more concise. And uh, I love the, I think maybe four or five years ago that Diane started putting this packet together, or maybe it was longer. It's just fantastic information, and I know it's a lot of work. So thank you to you and to the, and to the whole committee.
Thank you, Paul. Pass it on. I appreciate it.
Seeing nothing else.
I think Diane wanted me to technically say that I have a replacement sheet, if you really want a big one. Because one of the projects Steve didn't mention was building the bridge to Heron Point.
Yes.
Which is something new as a concept. When the committee heard about it, they said, interesting, that'd be at least thirty or forty feet high to get boats still underneath.
But the benefit of being the person who raised the budget can include it in there.
So Steve requested a placeholder, where we came out on that in the sheets. Steve requested ten thousand just to get a line item to put in front of everybody. We said, that's great, but we're not including it in this year's money, because we kinda, kinda have to get a general cost of, is there support and is it gonna cost twenty-three million dollars to build the bridge?
And as the council knows, we received the capstone stuff, the university's gonna do it for free.
So if you want, if that, there was a ten thousand dollar error, you can have the expansion if you want going forward. I will leave you. Thank you very much.
Rachel, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, I don't know that we can answer. We were, um, there was a, I was watching one of the meetings. I thought it was the CIP meeting.
Replay on Genel thirteen, and Sean Gregg brought up, uh, he was reviewing his items. And I thought he mentioned something, some repair that was gonna need to be done earlier than expected. And I don't have any, and I don't know what item it was, and.
If we need to be done, well, first of all, Shaun's not in this part of the budget.
Yeah.
Well, he is in, he is. He, he tells us his capital projects, but it's totally outside the budget funding.
We, we already passed his contribution to capital reserves.
Okay.
See, we're not talking about the capital reserve programming. We're talking about the contribution to it.
Yes, but I.
What's the question, I guess? I think you're talking about the outflow pipes that were emailed about, the scoot driver found the errors.
Only cause it was predicted to be a significant unexpected amount. I just, I like, I, I agree with all the comments about the CIP plan. I think it's very useful in knowing what's coming up. And I didn't know if we, it just needed, needed to be footnoted or at, or if it was already accounted for in here.
Uh, no.
We won't see until next year.
If it's an emergency, then we're gonna just have to do it, so it's not in the plan. Cause it's just that comes up, that's.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And you wouldn't see it.
And we just take it off.
Yeah, I don't know what reporting water and sewer does to ensure you, you do it as well as I do. It has nothing to do, yes or no, with the budget. It's funded entirely out of the fees for the services that water and sewer, so you.
Understood.
And so Shaun has his own bonding within water and sewer. He has his own capital reserves. He's got his own cash flow.
That was why I waited to mention it, cause I was looking for it in the CIP and I didn't see it.
No, it'd be under his.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We wouldn't look for the emergency repairs if it came through as a project and said, gee, we have to replace nineteen-seventy, you know, excuse me, it's called a more realistic, eighteen-seventy-three pipe underneath the, 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 the main road in town and have that dug up again. That would be an, an emergency repair.
Yeah, that's the, that's the thing I was trying to explain as well. The capital improvement plan is separate than the contributions to capital reserve funds. The cap- the plan is the plan. The contribution is the budget. So I look at the plan to come up with the budget.
Right.
We're doing the budget.
But we hadn't really tied it back earlier, I mean, directly. You, you do that.
I do that.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
This is the first I could ask about, so I understand what you're saying.
And there's also the fact that that doesn't mean the capital's gonna be spent. You're just contributing
Yeah.
new money into the capital.
It's putting money in a savings account.
You guys vote every year, I think several times, and saying, we'll actually use capital funds here to buy this and buy that, et cetera. So it's three pieces. It's the incoming, the plan, the [inaudible]. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Continue your deliberations on all of our banks.
Last but definitely not least, the library. And that is on page?
Fifty-six.
Thank you, fifty-six.
So Steve, there's actually cash sitting somewhere.
Well. It's, it's accounting cash. It's not, we don't have.
I understand accounting cash.
It's accounting cash.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
We don't have.
You know, they actually have bags of money in the basement.
Right, it's.
Their investment dollars that you would have to, you know, sell shares and the, you know.
Um, to the point, yeah. I remember when I was in another town, the guy literally thought I was sitting on a barrel of money somewhere of like eight million dollars. Like, that's not the way it works.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Yeah. So the library, an increase of eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. I do not touch this out of the fact that they are an independent body that the council appoints. And that's where we are.
So Carrie Gadbois, hi, Director for the Library. Just want to say, this year's been another positive year for us. We've added four hundred and eighty-nine new patrons, and that was a seventeen percent increase over the fiscal year before. Our programming attendance has gone up fifteen percent. And I think that's due in part to we're offering more programs than we used to, and that we're getting the word out there better. And CIRC is up two percent. Not as dramatic as the year before, but it's
Cirque.
Circulation, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, of all materials. And we now have a, another person who's receiving full benefits and is at point nine zero, almost full-time employee, which has been great. Has helped out a lot with um, continuity in the library and getting jobs done, and it's worked out really well. And we're looking at um, three major projects for CIP. I'm not sure if I should mention that right now. Is that part of this? The three projects are putting in a new door, which faces the big parking lot for better ADA, handicapped accessible, and just an easier way to get in the library, closer to the parking, um, be much better in the wintertime. As you know, it's, it's a long haul for somebody to walk around, kind of down the alleyway, around the front and up the ramp during the winter that it's constantly iced up. So that, the door's a big project. Uh, then in conjunction with that would be landscaping around the door, down the hole, what I call the alleyway, around the front. There'd be no more parking in the front. It would all be moved up by the new door. Right now, there's technically one spot there, um, handicap, but that would be up by the new door. And um, the other big project still is to replace, repair all the interior plaster of the old building and repaint. We've gotten estimates for almost all of these projects now. And we were waiting to get all the estimates in before deciding, you know, how much would be CIP, which direction, you know, how would fund it. Any questions that we have to answer then?
I have just a couple of questions. I think something that a lot of folks are curious about is obviously we just had a charging point installed on the side of your building. I think we're all very happy to see that. Um, I noticed in the budget, there's no uh, changes for your electricity bill. I wasn't sure if you had had any data at this point.
We'll cover it.
Okay.
It's a [inaudible].
End of my questions. Thank you.
Is that part of why your circulation's up a little bit?
Honestly, we've, we've given out, I think it's about six cards um, since the car charger went on, cause people come in, they roam around the library and it's like, oh, you're at New Market, you know, would you like a card? And they, oh, this is so nice. We give them a tour. So it, it's worked out well that way.
It sounds like the new door would also present more of a face to where more people are parking.
I think it would, definitely.
You can certainly see it when you come down the road, but you're, it may not be underway at the library.
Right.
Parking, going to the market, and some of the businesses on the other side or live across the street.
I think that's exactly, because right now, still, even though we have the big sign out front, the New Market Public Library, people park in the back. And then you have to walk all the way around the front, either way, whether it's through the alleyway or around the brick walkway. Um, I think if that door is there facing that parking lot, we'll, we'll get more business because of that, yeah.
Will that decrease all your, any of your parking that's along that back right now to put in the new entranceway there?
Uh, no, I don't, no, I don't think it will.
There's a little wall there, right? On that side? So that would probably have to come down.
Um, if the door goes in the middle, which is what we're, would look the best, be centered in between the two windows, that wall doesn't have to be touched. Plus the electrical conduit is right down there where that um, retaining wall is. So we're trying to avoid that.
Okay.
So where would uh, patrons be entering? I'm trying to think of in the building where you'd be coming in. Would that be the adults section?
It'd be the adult section.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all the bookcases to be rearranged.
Okay.
So we'd have a, still have a clear line of sight from the CIRC desk right to that door.
Okay, so it'd be like straight out that way. Okay, got it.
Yeah, and then we might possibly move all the computers, the six public computers, so that they're in the adult section right there for people to.
Okay.
Instead of having them on the perimeter, around the outside of the library. Working on, you know, rearranging.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would that require shifting the door that's there currently?
No, there's, there's no door. This is facing the big parking lot, like facing Pan's and Alice's.
I'm on the wrong side, my apologies.
Yeah. No, it'll be putting a hole in the wall.
Okay.
Possibly. We've been looking at a couple of different plans, um, but kind of looking towards one where it'd be a permanent awning. So it's like hard. It's, and then with post, like a porch. And you'd walk directly, the door'd be right in flush with the brick wall. And then there'd be an interior vestibule about five feet deep. With handicap, you push the button, both doors open at the same time.
Nice. Perfect.
So would that then be the, the ADA accessible entrance?
Yeah.
So not the front entrance any longer?
Right. Uh, well, the ramp would still be in the front unless we ever chose to remove it, so basically you'd have two. But this would be much, you know, nice and flat, easy for somebody to come right in.
Right, cause I know there's always been issues with that ramp too, icing up and, you know.
It's very hard to keep clear. It just comes off the front of the building there, and as soon as it hits the gold granite, it freezes, so.
So there would be then two entrances to the library?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be two.
You know, the plaster project's been a long time coming to.
It has.
To protect the building.
Yeah, it's been a long time, basically, cause we wanted to get the estimates on the other big projects to see how, what we're looking at totally for all, all of these projects, which we have now. So I anticipate, you know, the plaster will get done within the year, I'm hoping, yeah.
The source issue was briefly. Uh the source issue was roof leakage, right, or something?
We had a bad problem with leaks. That was, that was, that was solved, yeah. We have um new roof on, facing the parking lot, that's all new. And uh we have insulation blown in there and then the new roof, so that leak was all solved. We had a few leaks this year. They all got checked out. They got temporarily fixed, um and we got an estimate to get those fixed for fifteen thousand, which we're gonna get done. And then the roof seems to be in good shape for the next, you know, foreseeable future.
What do you typically take in in terms of revenues and donations?
Um all the, it's in the annual report. Uh I'd have to look it up, what it was last year.
Redacted.
I don't know, it's, it might be a thousand, two thousand in donations.
Yeah.
Books that are donated, uh we hand over to the friends of the library, and then they sell those. And then all the money that they make comes back to the library, and I usually use it for programming, actually.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to the council. You made a reduction in the operating budget of four hundred dollars.
Um.
What?
Sorry, uh welfare and code enforcement?
Oh, sorry.
I think those are the only two we missed.
I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, code enforcement. It's a reduction of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Twenty-nine.
Thank you. Um, reduction of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any? Yeah, so in the next page, welfare. It's seven hundred and seventy-dollar increase proceeding of uptick in rent assistance. I can tell you food. We got a lot of social service agencies that actually help us with that, so. And twenty bucks for supplies.
I just wanna say that in my sixth budget, this is the first time we've seen welfare go up. Cut and cut and cut and cut. And, 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 you know, for eh realistic reasons, um though I've had my issues with it. But, yeah, it's the first time.
As you never, as you know, this is a budget that we spend if need be.
Right.
And we just, that, yeah, we saw it this year, the re- uh rents had to go up.
It's interesting.
Do you think part of why it isn't higher is because of the work of like the community church and succeed hours of hunger and Saint Mary's?
Yeah.
Providing direct assistance to people.
Absolutely. The use of social service agencies is, and churches are huge in this.
And it's a, it's a fairly detailed process
Right.
that people have to go through in order to get services, which is a population of people who typically have a hard time navigating those types of systems. So it's problematic for sure, um and I, and I, it's a barrier. So i- it's not, we have to have processes in place for people to get assistance, and it's the right thing. We're talking about, you know, uh potentially, it could be, I mean, at one point.
We were over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was a lot of money.
With that one budget? Yeah.
And then when it's not being used, um you know, then at the end, it goes into the general fund, which is great for managing a budget.
Right.
But um but not for, for budgeting to, what we're actually, to our expenses.
I'd just comment to kinda tie it back to some of the questions I was, I had for the FIRE and police, which was intuitively, without any empirical data, I would just say, this seems more cost-effective to give people assistance to lower their, and keep their stress and need, need level down versus paying for ad hoc support through these other departments, which is far less.
Yeah, um one thing I'm gonna say though is the chair's right. We have a certain welfare guidelines that we have to follow by law, and it's difficult. So we almost actually say, go to a social service agency first. They're willing to help, and they probably even provide more assistance than we can. Where's, we, the, this city or town should be the last resort, and we try to make sure that happens.
Predicting fall in three areas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Here.
Yeah.
Police.
Fire. Yep.
Right. Or the local homeless shelter.
Right.
But that's not the town, so.
I understand that. I'm just saying that's, that's where people sometimes end up. Right, and it's not necessarily reflective of the need of the community, and that's, and this has been an ongoing conversation that we've had because, I mean, I've sat on the board of NCEP, which is a uh program here in town that uh takes donations and, you know, it's for, for services for, for the school and. For children. And one of the years that I was on the board, uh more than half of the requests that we were getting were for food. And, you know, and at the same time, we're seeing the food pantry uh use increase, you know, year, every year. So, so it's not a reflection of need, it's a reflection of, I, I don't, I don't, I think it's probably a lot of different factors for why people are accessing those services. But uh we're lucky that we live in such a supportive community, and we have a lot of, we do have a lot of services available to people. Um and I think that the welfare director helps direct people to those services too.
The economy's also good, so.
And that helps, yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, it's, it's definitely, um where people are doing okay.
But still, we, we heard the department head say, I think the trend is upward for the costs that they're getting.
Yeah.
So, even so.
Right.
So, something's going on.
Right, yeah.
So, that was the last departure. The council made a reduction of four hundred dollars in the water and sewer. So, does the council wish to review this again as a workshop as a whole? Or we'll put it on a resolution for adoption. You must have a budget by November fifteenth, so you don't have a lot of time.
I'll think.
Before I give approval, I would like to see just an updated.
Mm-hmm, oh, you do well. You'll have to, so on November sixth, you'll have a resolution to adopt the budget.
Yeah.
And in that will be the updated figures. You're allowed to adopt, to amend the budget that night, but you'll have to suspend the rules to act on it on the sixth, because I don't think we meet again before the fifteenth, so you have to do it that night. Unless you want to do a special meeting on the thirteenth. So through the sixth, you'll have the final figures with the resolution in the new, in the final budget. You'll actually have, what you'll have is a budget in the fi- You have to have it adopted by.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant we were meeting that.
No, no, no.
Wait a minute, what?
But you have to, so you'll have the new budget, the, you'll have a new column that says town council approved, so you have something in front of you. And that will then go to the, that, that's the one you vote on, and we send that to the municipal budget committee, so.
Can you give us um just some num, 'cause I, there were so many changes
Yep.
with the corrections?
We'll do a summary sheet of the corrections and.
Prior to the.
Yeah, prior to the packet, prior to the packet, yep.
Yeah.
Cause we'll have to do it during this week to get it.
Okay.
So we would get that ahead of the next meeting.
You'll get the packet, yeah.
What are we looking at? Can you give a?
Tax rate?
Yeah. And increase, like a percentage?
Um, I can. Percentage increase overall, including water and sewers, a nine point four two. Tax rate increase, let me just test real quick. And when I s- when I'm doing this, I'm using the five dollar and forty-three cents. I'm not using what the tax rate was last year because we have the revale. Eighty-nine cent.
We did not talk about revenues.
I can do revenue real quick, or do you wanna do it on the Wednesday? I mean, revenue's in the combined sheet. I'm a, I'm anticipating an increase. It's not a lot, a three point nine five percent. One thing you will notice, though, is I have no fund balance to be able to use. But I've seen an increase in motor vehicle registrations. Um in addition, we have, uh, we've been seeing an uptick in the mis- miscellaneous revenues, which is selling property or every, basically everything else. So we're budgeting that a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I'm trying to see what else we had. That was that really pretty big upticks. Oh, in watering, it's uh recreation special revenue fund. They have an increase in revenue, so we have that one as well, to six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So that's all rec department?
That, no, um.
The special revenue?
No, special revenue is a solid waste and recreation.
And I know I asked this of you recently, I don't think it was at our meeting, I'm not sure. The funds that we'll be receiving from the state of New Hampshire.
We will not be, we'll be sending this year's into fund balance, 'cause it's unanticipated revenue. You could hold a public hearing and use it. I would not recommend that. I'd use it to offset, to start rebuilding our fund balance, and we're able to use it in the following year, 'cause we'll get another one. So.
Maybe every year?
No, two years. That's why I would not use it to offset the budget, because it's one-time revenue.
Right, makes sense.
Well, and that's, you know, the, the idea that it's property tax relief.
It's not.
It's not.
It's capital project relief.
Right, and it's the state over the last decade not funding its responsibilities, and we've shouldered that burden year after year after year, so.
Uh November sixth, you'll have a chance to share that with Senator Full Clark when she comes in to meet with the council.
Oh, November sixth.
Yes. So that's where we are.
Happy to do that.
Anything else?
Got nothing. Thank you. Thanks to all the work that goes into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.